Okay, welcome, welcome everybody to our informal session. And to get things going, we're gonna have the Army Corps of Engineers Coastal Storm Risk Management. And we got Colonel Brian Holberg, Norfolk District Commander. Oh, maybe we got somebody else first, there we go.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, yes. Colonel Holberg will be right behind me. I just wanted to give a couple of preface remarks before they begin. Perhaps some of you saw some information in the newspaper and on the news recently about Norfolk receiving a fair bit of money to address coastal resilience. I wanted to put that out there, that this is the process by which Norfolk received that money. This is the first step on that process. And so I wanted you all to understand that. One of the other things I hope that you might understand is during the course of the flood protection public meetings, we heard repeatedly from your constituents that they wanted to know where the state and federal partners are. This is where the federal partners are. So this is a really good thing for the citizens of Virginia Beach. And then lastly, I would like you to understand how this fits into our overall flood protection program. When Public Works speaks of the flood protection program and the bond referendum specifically, that's the stuff that we're doing to address rain and the internal flooding issues that we have as a result of rain. The coastal resiliency, this really relates more to the changes in the climate, sea level rise, those types of things. And I just wanted to make sure that you understood that there really are two separate programs. They're complementary of each other. We need both, but one cannot take the place of the other. We really need to make sure that we do both. And I just wanted to put that in your frame of understanding, so exactly what Colonel Holberg and Ms. Hammer are gonna talk about, I just wanted to make sure that you were seeing it from that standpoint. And without any further comments from me, I'll introduce Colonel Brian Holberg.
Welcome, sir. Nice to see you again.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council. Thanks for having me and Michelle present today on the Coastal Storm Risk Management. Now, I appreciate, you know, LJ coming up and kinda giving that frame of mine of, you know, what we're trying to do here. And what I want to thank is just the partnership that we have with the city of Virginia Beach. You know, this is a collaborative process, and partnership is really based on, you know, the three Cs: communication, collaboration, and commitment. And on the communication, that's really what this presentation is about. It's about making sure we have shared understanding of what this project is, that we're soliciting feedback and information, and that we're open and transparent with exactly what the project is. And I just wanna reiterate, because a lot of times we battle this perception that we're gonna get to the end of this feasibility study, and the bulldozers are gonna show up, and, you know, dirt's gonna start moving, and concrete's gonna get poured, or we're gonna make an oyster reef, and that's not what's gonna happen, right? What's gonna happen is we're going to tell the Chief of Engineers that we have a conceptual plan with the city, how are we gonna mitigate coastal storm risk management so that we can get that into a Water Resource Development Act bill, which, you know, the target for that is really in 2026, and then we can get further authorizations and funding to actually get after design, right? Then after design, then you get into construction. So this is a multi-phase process, and Michelle, she's got a slide, I'm just reinforcing, over communicating on this specific fact. But this has been a great partnership collaborating on how to mitigate coastal storm risk management. We're all committed to resolving that. So I'm gonna turn it over to Michelle so she can get into the meat and potatoes of the presentation. Michelle?
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of City Council. Thank you for having us today, so we could talk about the feasibility study. So just a little bit, I appreciate LJ's comments, and certainly Colonel Holberg's comments about kind of the path forward and what we're looking at in terms of commitment and years. So just a little bit of background, certainly the Civil Works process is our feasibility study informs Congress as it makes decisions for authorizing and funding water resources investments. When we're looking at, from our perspective for Civil Works, we're looking, is there federal interest to partner on a plan to improve the condition within that locality? And in this case, we're talking about coastal storm risk. So is there federal interest to partner on a plan? And when we're looking about coastal storm risk management, we're talking about a cost share of 65/35, so that can be a significant investment. As we are, again, where studies are authorized by Congress, so we had to have permission to begin this feasibility study. And we have three main business lines. They are navigation, flood risk, and coastal storm risk management, and then also aquatic ecosystem restoration. The feasibility study certainly is completed to identify, again, if there is a project that would address those water resource problems, and if it is within the federal interest. It recommends a plan for congressional authorization, which allows Congress then to appropriate funding for design and construction. Again, the cost share going into design is 65/35, and then construction is 65/35. And then the next slide, we'll talk about those steps that get to a job or to a project on the ground, and their 17 steps to a constructed project. So step one is the problem identification. The locality identifies that there's a problem, and certainly through the sea level Y study, you have outlined what that problem is. And then there's that outreach to the Corps of Engineers within the area, and we discuss the problem and determine if there is an authority or a business line, if it fits within a business line, and is there an opportunity for us to partner on a study. Also, that includes a letter of intent, and our latest letter of intent was from March of last year. And then we look also, next step, is there a congressional authority? And there are two authorities that we are looking at in this feasibility study. One was championed by Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, and that's Section 1201 of America's Water Infrastructure Act of 2018 dated January 3, 2018. And then the second is Public Law 8471 dated June 15, 1955. And both of those give us the opportunity to look at coastal storm risk and also riverine risk within the city of Virginia Beach. So in the next step, we sign what's called a feasibility cost share agreement, and that was signed in July of last year, and that is the official start of the feasibility study. And we are right here at step four, we're working on conducting the feasibility study. And we'll be working towards a draft report, which we will publicize for public comment, and then ultimately we'll complete a final report, which then is, we're on step five, will be submitted to our North Atlantic Division, and then ultimately the North Atlantic Division will submit it for review, and then it'll go through Washington-level review, and then ultimately the end of the feasibility phase is marked by the signature of a chief's report. And right now, we're looking at 2026 for that chief's report. Let me go back, I apologize, let me go back to this one slide. So that's where the end of the feasibility study is. It then gets coordinated through OMB, ASA and OMB, and then it gets prepared for congressional authorization, and that authorizes the project, which makes it available to go into a design agreement. We would sign a design agreement, and then work into design, which is called preconstruction engineering and design. And then as we work towards the first contract, then we would sign what's called a project partnership agreement, and then we continue design and get into construction. So as you can imagine, we compete nationally for funding, and then that, we're competing with other projects, so it can take a little while for that to get into the budget, and then certainly it can take a little while for those agreements to be executed. So definitely multiple years after we sign the chief's report, would we see going into design and into construction. This is the more detailed scope for the feasibility study. We just completed the alternatives milestone in November of last year, and so we are working on the tentatively selected plan. We are working on defining an alternative that maximizes the net benefits, and I'll get into that in a little bit of what that means. And then after the tentatively selected plan, we work towards the agency decision milestone. What happens between those two milestones is we work on optimizing. We identify a plan that maximizes net benefits, and then we start optimizing. We look at different levels of performance to see if there are different, say, heights of a surge barrier that would provide additional benefits. And then we work until we can find the nexus of where those benefits are maximized. After the TSP, we do publish a draft report that goes out for, again, public review. Then we work towards the agency decision milestone. And each one of these milestones is an opportunity for the community, the city of Virginia Beach, to confirm that we're still in alignment, and there's still support for the plan that we are recommending. And then we work towards finalizing the report and submit it for senior, we brief the senior leaders, excuse me, and then submit for a Washington-level review, working towards the chief's report. The study began again in July of 2022 with the signing of the feasibility cost share agreement, and that cost share agreement, of course, is between us and the city of Virginia Beach. The alternatives will be formulated and evaluated based on our study objectives, and we'll go through those in the next couple of slides. They kind of outline what we're looking to solve. And then the study area includes the entire city of Virginia Beach. So that includes two federal projects, that's the Virginia Beach Hurricane and the Sand Bridge Beach Nurishment Project. And the recommended plan that comes from that may look at some modifications to those So as we start the feasibility study, we really have to tell a story. What is this so what? What are the answers we are trying to solve by this feasibility study? And we need to set a baseline for our economic modeling. We develop what's called a future without project, and it essentially outlines what the future would look like without any intervention. In this case, we are expecting the study area to continue to experience impacts from coastal storm risk management, or coastal storms. The Sand Bridge Hurricane Protection Project started in 1998, and will have a 50-year nourishment cycle which will end in 2048. So within the life of this, economic life of this project, that study would run out, or that project would run out. And the Virginia Beach Hurricane Protection Project would similarly run out in 2051. We'll certainly continue to coordinate with the city to make sure that we're identifying any projects that are identified to be implemented by the city itself and would become part of that future without project. I did wanna take a minute to note that we are coordinating with the Navy to include facilities that are within the city boundaries, and this separate agreement allows us to evaluate the facilities so that when we look at the city of Virginia Beach, it's a more holistic solution than we're evaluating versus piecemealing, cutting out the different facilities outside of whatever plan that we recommend. I'll just mention that we're continuing to work with the Navy right now to define what that, to refine that scope. As you can imagine, defining risk within a Navy facility is a little different than defining risk or the economic risk within a residential neighborhood. So we're continuing to work with the Navy to refine what that scope of work looks like. So the problems, opportunities, objectives, and constraints, these outline how we frame our feasibility study moving forward. Certainly, problems exist such as critical infrastructure that are vulnerable to coastal storm risk, the effects of the coastal storms certainly on vehicle traffic, and then also to economic damage to structures within the city, and then also the risk that the coastal storms pose to life, health, and safety within the city of Virginia Beach. Some of the opportunities that we're focused on are improve the resilience of the city to recover from coastal storms, the opportunity to utilize natural nature-based features where they make sense and can be sustainable to reduce coastal storm risk, improve certainly floodplain management, reduce the impact of coastal storms within DOD facilities, and then manage risk to utilities, including water and wastewater, and those critical infrastructure that helps the city come back online more quickly. The objectives for the feasibility study are to reduce economic impacts from coastal storms and to reduce, again, coastal storm risk to human life, health, and safety within the city of Virginia Beach. Some of the constraints that are similar to all of our feasibility studies is that we are to look for plans that do not create or exacerbate flooding coastal storm impacts on other communities, or in this case, also military installations, and then do not certainly exacerbate life or health, safety within the community, and do not, again, negatively impact the facilities. Some study considerations that we are including, of course, include sea level change, existing future environmental conditions, existing and future projects, and environmental justice communities. Certainly, a priority of the administration is to make sure that we are identifying and capturing and reaching out to environmental justice communities within our feasibility Some of the measure screenings that we used initially, certainly we use available data to outline and frame where we think the risk will be within the city, and some of that information that we use is structure damage developed by the sea level Y study, and that was in the form of HAZIS, FEMA, special flood hazard areas, and then certainly project recommendations that were identified in the sea level Y study. Some of the structural measures that were included in our alternatives include, they include seawalls and floodwalls and levees and storm surge barriers and beach and fill dunes, and that outlined the alignments that we're showing, certainly as we note here, is what was included in the sea level Y study. So that starts our baseline for the alternatives, and then as we dig in, certainly define those in more detail as we work at optimizing those alternatives. I'll just mention, don't have a slide in terms of map, and maybe I'll go back to that. For anywhere we identify structural measures, our policy is also to look at non-structural measures in those areas and compare that with the structural alternative. But there may be areas within the city separately that fall outside of structural measures, and so those would be included for consideration for non-structural measures. And in this case, non-structural measures include buyout or acquisition, elevation, and dry and wet floodproofing. Usually, the dry and wet floodproofing is kind of limited to commercial property, or if you have a multifamily property, a large number. So similar to the sea level Y study, we also look at natural nature-based features. Some of the features that are considered, again, of course, would be beach and fill dune, reef habitat restoration, marsh wetland restoration, living shorelines, submerged aquatic vegetation, and any kind of drainage improvements where you're able to hold water, and it, you know, reduces the drainage or increases the drainage time to reduce flooding. The primary objective of when we're formulating these different alternatives, again, is to reduce coastal storm risk. That is our primary objective, but there will be other benefits too that we'll talk about in the next slide. When we formulate our plans, we are working towards maximizing, again, net benefits, and so we're looking at, from a taxpayer perspective, as the stewards of the federal taxpayer dollar, we wanna make sure that the plan maximizes those net benefits. So that doesn't necessarily correlate with the highest benefit-cost ratio. It's looking at what are the benefits when you subtract the costs from those benefits? Which plan maximizes those benefits for that alternative? And that's important, again, to convey the return on the federal taxpayer dollar, and making sure that we are investing money wisely for the federal taxpayer. So that's our primary NAD benefit is coastal storm risk management, so that will be our focus when we formulate our plans. There are other benefits that we include as well, such as reduced land loss from erosion, reduced emergency costs. In this case, it could be debris. Certainly, that's a benefit that FEMA provides, but if you have less debris, say, from damaged interior out at the road, then that's a benefit that can be accounted for in our study. Reduced maintenance of existing projects and beach recreation, and in this case, we need, that can be up to 50% of the benefit. And next, our policy, again, is that we identify the plan that reasonably maximizes that NAD benefit, and it does require a benefit-cost ratio of a minimum of one. There are additional benefits that we can also evaluate as well, and recently, the administration has really focused on making sure that we're capitalizing on the comprehensive benefits that we're doing a full evaluation. So other additional benefits that we can evaluate are the regional economic development, what kind of benefit does the plan provide for jobs within the area in support of that construction of that project, other social effects, and quantitative and qualitative evaluation methods may be used. So there may be things like other social effects that we don't necessarily have numbers associated with that, but it really comes down to telling the story. So if there are other benefits that are provided to the community, having that conversation that helps tell the story helps us justify that plan. So the plan formulation strategies include, again, maximizing the NAD benefit, maximizing benefits across all four accounts for comprehensive benefits, and prioritizing managing risk for environmental justice, environmental justice shows socially vulnerable communities, and reducing risk to human life, health, and safety. Other considerations we include are that, from our principles and guidelines, and they talk about completeness, is the plan complete? Does it include all actions or measures that address planning objectives? Is it effective? To what degree does it meet the planning objectives? Is it efficient? Is it cost-effective? And is it acceptable in terms of applicable laws, regulations, and public policies? So our initial array of alternatives that we presented at our Alternatives Milestone meeting, we have eight alternatives. Our first alternative is always the no action. What does it look like in comparison? And then we include measures that were also included in the sea level Y, and that includes structural measures such as surge barriers, and also have, again, additional features along the southern rivers, and Little Creek, and non-structural measures. And then we'll look at maximizing the benefits across all of these alternatives. We'll look to reasonably maximize the NAD benefit, and then we'll also look at alternatives that maximize environmental justice in socially vulnerable communities, and then do the comparison of all those alternatives. So how do we get there from here, and certainly to the tentatively selected plan, which right now is scheduled for October of '24? We need to complete the analysis and gather any remaining data to help us set up our economic and our engineering models. We'll need to go ahead and model our economic future without project condition, refine the alternatives based on, again, that future without project condition modeling results. So we'll model the results and then adjust our alternatives to make sure that they're inclusive of those areas, certainly continue to coordinate with the city of Virginia Beach. When we look at maximizing the NAD benefits, at some point, the city may realize, well, that's not really where we wanna put our support, and there is that opportunity for identifying a locally preferred plan. In some cases, that locally preferred plan is a subset of what the NAD plan is. We're looking at the entire city, and maybe the city is interested in partnering in a smaller subset, and so that's an option as well. But we would identify that as we work towards a tentatively selected plan, is there a locally preferred plan that the city would like to pursue? Again, we'll model the project alternatives and refine cost estimates for each of the alternatives. We'll do comprehensive evaluation of benefits for each of the alternatives, evaluate residual risk, and that's a really important conversation point that we need to have with the public. What level of risk is the public willing to accept and can be conveyed, you know, from the public, and certainly that the city is willing to accept as well. It's interesting, as we talk about residual risk, that's a conversation that really is a lifetime. Today, we are talking about residual risk of a plan that we'll formulate, but then that conversation would need to continue into design and then also into construction, because the people here today that accept that risk may not be there when we're in design and then into construction later. So that needs to be a continuous conversation. We'll also compare the benefits and costs for each alternative. We'll identify the NAD plan and the maximum benefit plan, and then certainly, again, confirm in alignment with the city of Virginia Beach where the support is, and we'll confirm, certainly let you know what our tentatively selected plan is. An important part of this in terms of compliance is our environmental coordination. Norfolk District, we plan to prepare an environmental impact statement, just from the expected impact of any kind of structural measures. Public scoping notice was provided electronically to stakeholders in October of 2022, and that was ahead of the scoping period. That was provided to email addresses to civil leagues throughout the city of Virginia Beach and several local nonprofits, and I believe that was also shared on social media by the city of Virginia Beach and the Corps of Engineers as well. In-person meeting was held at Landstown High School on October 13 of 2022, and then we had two virtual office hours on October 18 and October 20 of 2022. Our first interagency meeting was held in October 13 of 2022, and why that's important is certainly resource agencies where we're looking to gain our compliance from, they inform our scope and schedule of what's gonna be necessary for them to complete their consultations on our feasibility study. So the final products and study outcome, the recommended, the final feasibility report will recommend a plan for authorization, design, and construction, and includes the results of the analysis and modeling and initial design, and we say 10%, but it's really more of a concept-level design and cost estimate. The chief's report is what we call an authorizing document, and that's what will be used to authorize the recommended project, and then be able to include that project into federal budget, budgeting in the future. Kind of an example, I think we maybe spoke to earlier, was the CSRM project for the city of Norfolk. That feasibility study, the chief's report was completed in 2019, and then just recently has been allocated $399 million via the bipartisan infrastructure law. So having that chief's report and the authorized project is important for getting funding, for moving forward into design and construction. And lastly, these are our points of contact for the feasibility study, and certainly if you have any questions, certainly reach out to CJ or LJ, and certainly can reach out to us if there are any other questions. I'll pause to see if you have any questions.
Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a great opportunity for the city. I think when I first got here, this is one of the first priorities that you all gave me as city manager, was to figure out a way that we can get to 3x3x3. And it took us several years. I mean, I think there was a couple times where we got really close. We got all the way up to OMB, the Office of Management and Budget for the President's Office, and we just didn't make the final cut. So last year, when we were able to finally cross that bridge, it was just a very exciting time, and it's a demonstrable way for us to address our existential threat, which is climate change and sea level rise. I just wanna take a short moment to thank a lot of people, like, we got a lot of members of our staff, our Legislative Affairs Teams, Public Works, and our consultants, Becker, really did an amazing job advocating for this, and also Duberry, who took the first stab at the sea level Y's project, and they also helped us as well with the Army Corps as well. Definitely wanna thank Colonel Holberg and his team. They've been with us throughout the years, meeting with all hosts of different people, including the Office of Management and Budget, to help them understand the project and the merits of it as well. We also wanna thank our local military partners. I think basically every commander in Hampton Road supported this as well. And last but not least, definitely wanna thank our federal delegation, our senators and our congresspeople as well, but most importantly, thanking City Council. You all have stuck with us throughout the many years that we've went for this, and you've made it a priority, not only from a policy standpoint, but a funding standpoint. And I think once we finally were able to get over the hump, one of the big things that helped us get over the hump was what you all have done over the years in terms of funding. This is a priority. Not many communities have dedicated the level of funding that you all have had to this project, and thank you all so much for that.
Any other questions or concerns? Amelia?
You knew from where you did the October studies and shared with us. We're excited about the entire project. It's really good, and of course, I've learned about the Corps of Engineers, the fine work you do, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, let me just say, I had the pleasure of, you know, being there for the kickoff for this study group, and I'll tell you, what a remarkable group of people that you put together. But I think, you know, as we deal with a problem of this magnitude... But I think, you know, as we deal with a problem of this magnitude, it takes a lot of different people to come to the table and, you know, connect all the dots and do what to do. And I have 100 degree in confidence that what we're doing is in the right direction. As the manager said, it solves our, you know, it addresses and confronts directly our number one priority that we have as a city and in our region. And to thank everybody concerned, there were a lot of players involving getting us to this point, and there will be a lot more to do in the future. But thank you very much for what you do. Most appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Duhany, city managers' briefings.
Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time, Taylor Adams, Deputy City Manager, will come and present, council, a possible small business loan program for your consideration.
Most of you know my, my technical limitations, so it's nothing short of a miracle that I figured out how to turn that briefing on. So, good afternoon, Mayor.
Taylor, how many sky miles do you have going? How many million sky miles you got going right now?
Less than a million, Mayor, but, but, but a few. And, and, but, but it is, it is great to be, to be home. And I will say, just before we dive in, thank you all for allowing me to represent us with, with the governor's team last week in, in, in international travel. It was a, it was a real honor to be with the team, with the executive team from VDP and, and one other colleague from South Central Virginia as we, as we worked on a number of deals. I won't say more at this, at this moment, but, but a really exciting week with the governor's team and so, but always great to be home. However, today, what we have is a, is a, is a briefing on a potential road forward. One, we want to, we want to provide an update on a program that you all started during the pandemic, but then also just to say, what you're going to see here is something that, that we started working on coming out of your retreat. We heard loud and clear from, from all of you that there was a desire for us to perhaps look at some new tools specifically focused at the small business community and some things that we might be able to do to provide benefits that have not previously been part of the program. And so this is a first attempt at what, at what might be a road forward. And obviously, we'll welcome any, any input that you all can give us and, and certainly guidance as to whether you'd like us to move forward on this. Before I move forward, before I officially start though, I'd like to thank the team in finance, other colleagues in the city manager's office, budget management services in the city attorney's office for their help in putting this together, as well as my own team in economic development. So quickly to talk about the, the basis for where we began, for, for the members of the body that were, that were here during the pandemic, you will, you will, this will likely sort of ring a bell for you on the, but for some of the new members, I'll, I'll rehash your program. So early, early in the pandemic, before, before, before the CARES Act, before subsequent rounds of funding, we, we, through your leadership, quickly realized that we were dealing with as much of an economic crisis as we were dealing with a, with a health crisis. And, and we saw that it was our smallest businesses that were, that were most impacted by, in the early days of the pandemic. And so we were so grateful for your recognition of that and your leadership when you allowed us to basically appropriate $400,000 to, to LISC, to, to get in, to, to basically do zero interest small business loans for our small business community. And so you can see a summary of what we had there. There were the, the $400,000 amounts between 10 and 25,000. They were zero interest loans. There was a balloon payment at the end, at the, at the, the end of the loan period if it had not been paid off. But through that program, we saw $285,000 worth of loans approved. And then there, and then that program is continuing. There's an additional $50,000 that are in underwriting now. And so what we learned from that was that there was, that where this was aimed at pandemic response, there was an appetite in the small business community to participate in this. And so using this as a back, as sort of a, the backs, you know, the guidance for what a potential program might look like, we started, we asked ourselves a few questions, started working and working on that. And we've come up with, with a framework, and this is very broad. I mean, this, like I say, we'd be asking you all for guidance before we, and, and any thoughts that you have on this. But, but coming out of your, out of your retreat, we heard that, that you wanted, that there was a desire for us to continue providing enhanced activities and enhanced sort of services to the small business community. We did not have an appropriation. We recognized we needed money. So, so we, we said, well, how would we do this? And we said, well, we could fund this over five or six years. Why five or six years? These are loans, and so they'll be paid back. And, and as those loans are paid back, that, that money coming back in basically goes into a fund that can become self-sustaining over time. So we don't, generally in this space, these, these loans are between three and five years. So we said, well, we could be looking at a five to six-year anticipated funding, of anticipated funding year over year to get to a sustaining amount. To get us started, I've isolated $250,000 in my operating account that we believe is available for this to be, to get started now, even ahead of the budget that you're considering. But the, but, but if this is something you liked, we thought the charm, there was some charm to that and that there'd be some initial funding to get started. And then if we were to continue that in this next budget, well, that would be $500,000 that could cut, that could be available potentially on, you know, by July 1, that could really kick this program off. We recognize that we don't internally have the resources to, to manage this. And by that, I mean, no one on my team is a banker. I was a banker 20 years ago, but, but, but I've spent the last 20 years of my career serving the public. And, and in my office, we don't have people that are in the business of administering loans. However, LISC does this every day. LISC has national programs, and that is one, one recommendation we would make. Whereas our first iteration of this was pandemic response, and the reason we chose LISC is because they had national experience with this. So they were great for us during the pandemic. We would ask that we, that if we move forward, we let them administer this consistent with their national guidelines, which are, which are built around fairness and serving underserved populations and, and, and communities. And, and for that, when it says loan terms to be determined, that would be loan, loan terms to be determined, and we would, we would recommend consistent with LISC's national program. And we would obviously want to, if you told us to move forward with this, we would want to come back with more information on that and give you a formal briefing on that program. But, but we think that, that if we were to do that, that this really advances the ball for the small business community, consistent with the conversation you all had at your retreat. And so we were trying to proactively put something together that we could get in front of you to just sort of allow you to react to and give us some directional guidance. Before I stop and, and take questions, I want to show you about a couple of other, of other programs that are existing. So you'll notice, I said, the, this is from the Small Business Administration and specifically the Small Business Development Center, which is embedded within the, with the Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce. These are programs that exist and are available nationwide through the SBA. And so, one, there's the, the microloan program up to 50,000. That's, that's sometimes referred to as short form lending. It's working, those are working capital loans that are available through the Small Business Administration. 7A loans up to 5 million, 504 loans up to 5 million. And, and as you can see, those are locally administered. What's great about this, if we were to build this, the program for these small loans, we are already working every day with the Small Business Development Center. And we think that there would be an opportunity to have SBDC come into the Hive formally to administer this program day in and day out as an additional enhancement for the small business community. However, we would not do that without you telling us that's something that you found attractive. But it is, but that is something that we could do as part of this so that we had small dollar loans and then loans sort of in the, up to that $50,000 working capital amount, and then a fully fledged SBA program administered by, by, by SBDC out of a city resource. We thought that might be a nice enhancement if you, if you all wanted to move forward with this. And then finally, and forgive me, these are links as you can see, and so I'm, I'm seeing now they're not projecting well on the screen. But there, there are grants available in the Hive as well. These are, we have, we have, we have staff available to help with the, with the application for and administration of these grants day in and out, day in and day out, recognizing that, that loans don't work for all small businesses, that we wanted to be sure that there are other programs. Important to note, these programs exist today and are, and are available today. This is really just here as a reminder. With that, I'm going to back up two slides and take, take any questions that you all might have. And like I say, we'd love to know if this is something that you all think is, is moving in the right direction.
Very exciting. Any questions? Amelia?
A little bit more about LISC first.
So I always get this wrong, boss. Help me remember. So it's Local Initiative Support Corporation, is that right? Got it right. So that is, it's a, so it is a, it is a, LISC stands for Local Initiative Support Corporation. It is a national organization that is focused specifically on, on helping to grow and foster the small business community, specifically historically underutilized populations.
You might want to mention that we utilize them, CARES Act money.
Yes, ma'am. In addition to this, there were three other rounds of, of grant funding that, that were administered by, by LISC as part of your United Way sort of appropriations throughout the pandemic. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And other thing, you mentioned that there's no interest, but some?
There were no interest on the pandemic loans. We do, it is important to note that LISC does charge interest as part of their national program. However, that, that, that interest generally goes to cover their administrative fee. So during, during the pandemic, they're, they did that as a public service. But, but yes, ma'am, we do anticipate that they would charge interest consistent with their national program if you were to move forward.
After that as well, if you, council would use, if we wouldn't put funds in line with what they do with their national programs, LISC could likely bring additional funds from their national resources to match and supplement enhanced the program.
Do they cost us anything being a part of them?
Only thing it would, only thing it would cost the council is if council was willing to add, add, provide funding towards it. So basically, for example, council wanted to do the 250,000, that would be incorporated in LISC funds, and then they would likely be able to match it with other bank funds to do a program specifically for Virginia Beach.
Idea, because we do have a lot of, you know, small businesses that need that little, you know, not so much a handout, but a handout.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Anyone else, question?
Welcome back.
Thank you, sir.
For the first iteration, how long was the program in place?
So for the, for the pandemic relief?
Opening to...
Oh goodness, let's see. It would have been, let's, let's call it late summer of 2020, right as we were in the throes of the pandemic. And it, and we are still, basically, we, we, there are still applications coming in under that program. One of, one of, one of the things that, I'll come to you in a minute, son. One of the things that we would recommend, though, council member, as it relates to the original 400,000, that was specifically intended for pandemic response. Now, it was not, it was, it was not money that is, that basically is, is subject to some of the provisions in the CARES Act. One of the things you might consider if we were to move forward would be taking the remaining balance, which is about $65,000, and converting that into the new program that we are starting as the pandemic is winding up.
Do you have an idea of how many applicants for this initial, I guess roughly two years that we received?
Yes, sir. So there were, and, and there is a spreadsheet that we have from LISC with full, that outlines all of the reporting on this. So there were 12 businesses that were approved there, too. They're in underwriting now. And roughly off the top of my head, I want to say that there were eight to 10 more applications that were made that, that were ultimately either not advanced for approval or LISC didn't, LISC requested additional information and did not hear back. But we can get you a full, a full report on that.
Okay. Thank you. I had an opportunity, and I had requested from the city manager just a list of those businesses. And it appears, and again, I'm a small business owner, that it was pandemic related. But as I've kind of looked into this, sometimes it does prevent some of the smallest businesses from being able to benefit from programs because the requirements are so stringent. And so that would be something, you know, when you ask a new, you know, if you started in 2020 and the pandemic hit in, you know, six or eight weeks, you don't have two years of tax returns. So, you know, I, I don't know the average, but, you know, for two years being open, and I hear from so many small business owners, you know, 20 or 22 applications doesn't seem like there was a strong push from the business community to access these funds. So I just, that would be a concern is to understand the requirements.
So, so yes, sir, as it relates to the two-year requirement, again, we leaned on, as we were not experts in the, in the lending space, we leaned, we leaned on the provider to, to help us understand what the appropriate conditions, particularly for zero interest loans, would have been. That said, if there is, if there are specific conditions that you would like us to carry to them and ask them to consider, we are more than happy to do that. I do know of three, of three occasions where the, the requirement of being in business for two years was, was an inhibitor to a business receiving, receiving a approval through this loan process. So if that is something that council wants to look at, we're, we're happy to take that to them. It's important for me to tell you, I don't, as I, I don't know how they would respond to that as it relates to their underwriting guidelines, but we certainly could, could find out the answer for you.
And just as a side note, there are cities within seven cities that are doing similar programs that aren't operating through LISC, and they've had a very strong...
So yes, that's a great point, and that, and that is something. There are some of our neighboring cities who's, quite frankly, they're, they're, the business environments are more challenged than they are in Virginia Beach, who have utilized their community, their CDVGs, their Community Development Block Grants to fund small, what would be microgrant and microloan programs. Historically, you all have, you all have used those same funds to promote affordable housing, to, to address homelessness in our community. You have used them in many cases to, I believe, CDVG funds can be used to, to offset costs associated with, with water and sewer infrastructure. But specifically here, they've been, they've been, we've used them to address housing challenges in our community. If you all told us to, to look at the Community Development Block Grant for this purpose, we could then do that. However, it would be important to note that it, it would, it would involve, and I don't want to speak for the manager, but it would likely involve directing revenues away from existing programs that are, that are currently obligated in housing and neighborhood preservation.
Thank you, Taylor.
Anybody else? Rocky and then Sabrina.
Taylor, so that, that stat of two years, when I've talked to the small business owners in District One and throughout the city, they need help immediately because the failure rate is very, it's very high in that first one to two years. And so I think if we could get it to them earlier and get the help they need sooner, I would, I would be in support of that because I, I think the three-year mark is the pivotal mark for small business where they can start to make it on their own. So they certainly need us sooner than later.
Yes, sir. We'll take, and, and we'll take that to LISC. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Sabrina?
Certainly do appreciate Mr. Adams, you following up on the request by council. And I would concur with colleagues that have just spoken regarding that two-year period in working with small business owners as well. This has been an inhibitor for them, and I've made that known several times.
Yes, ma'am.
And manager, so that's something that you've known about. So I would say if we are going to extend additional monies for this particular program, let's make sure we make it easy for the businesses who need the funding to access the program. Otherwise, we're just doing the same thing we were doing before, and we want to see different results. So that would require different requirements.
Yes, ma'am. We, and, and thank you for bringing that up, council member. You certainly... You certainly, your concerns around the two-year, around the two-year requirement are well documented in my office, and we anticipate that that would be part of the conversation. And so we are, we are happy to take that to LISC. However, we did not want to advance that ahead of this briefing. But yes, ma'am, if that is, if, we are hearing you loud and clear and are happy to, to take, to take that to them and get feedback and bring it back to this body.
Okay, Chris?
Sorry, this is, this is near and dear to, to me. And to Rocky's point, I think it's also, in reviewing that data, if you could send that out, I'm not sure if all council members received that, that Excel sheet. But the average loan was roughly 20,000 or 25,000.
Yes, sir.
And to Councilman Holcomb's point, you know, if you started in 2020, the average is three years to succeed or fail. And that's without a global pandemic.
Yes, sir.
And so if we got that down to 5,000 or 7,500 for that mean, that would do a lot for the person or the individual that was starting out. So successful, looks good. Thank you for the work you all have done. But I think there's a, probably a handful of, of small businesses in all of our districts that would, you know, jump for joy if they had an opportunity to grab five or $7,500 at low interest because they couldn't qualify at a normal bank.
And, and important to note, where we're, we did 10 to 25 on the front end because we were doing grants up to 10,000. So it's important to note, through economic development and also with LISC, at the same time that we were making loans in excess of 10, we were doing grants up to 10. And so the reason we started at 10, went from 10 to 25, is so that there was coverage in that next range. In this program, we would anticipate that if someone needed $2,500, they could apply for 2,500, 5,000, 7,500, at any increment that, that, that LISC felt was appropriate. It is important for me to, to say at this point that, that if we move into the national program, or towards the national program, fair lending will be a core component of anything that LISC brings to us, and that is something that has some federal mandate on it. So I don't want to speak in terms of, of what we can definitely do because I'm not an expert in the current iteration of fair lending standards in America. However, they will be, and we'll get this information from them and come back.
Right here. Rocky?
Taylor, one quick thing. I had a question, and you may already been looped in on it, about improvement in the parking lots not being a part of the, the actual building. Can you speak to that a little bit or what you know about it?
So that is likely a question associated with the facade improvement grant program. So what is, what is, what my team is calling the FIG now? I'm not sure that that's the best we can do. We'll come up with something better. But, 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 but same thing. That was, that was something that we started, give or take, three years ago. And we recognized that the bulk of our small business community would never really be able to qualify for an Economic Development Investment Program Grant, and that we needed a tool to just get started in that space. And so that's where, through your leadership, that's where the facade improvement program came from. We took what had been the VIBE grant program, and we sort of took it citywide to sort of dip in the, dip a toe in the water of this. Council member, we missed on the, that's just one. The only reason it's not in there now is because I didn't think of it three years ago and we were writing the program. But, but, but that said, it can easily be added.
Yeah. Well, that, that's certainly, that's certainly one I would like to see looked at, be added because some of these shopping centers, you know, the parking lot's certainly been neglected with striping and odd holes and things like that. So I appreciate you taking a look at that.
We'll get, we'll get it added. Yes, sir.
Good. Josh?
Mr. Mayor, Taylor, nice to see you back.
Thank you, council member.
Question for you, as part of the underwriting analysis or eligibility analysis, will it be taken into account whether this particular company has applied previously for, for city assistance, number one? And then number two, I'm guessing there will hopefully be a plan to make sure that the availability of this assistance is cast out to a wide net to make sure that the maximum amount of businesses are able to do this?
Yes, sir. So, so I'll take those in order. So I doubt that there would be a prohibition based on, as we were moving into LISC's national program, it is not likely that their initial, that their initial request would come to us with a, with a prohibition on having received prior assistance from the city. That is something that we can look at, though, and we've got a good list of everyone who received pandemic assistance. And so we can, we can absolutely work, work that in if that's something you all would like to see. Secondarily, as it relates to the, to casting a wide net, the last time we did this, we actually, we actually put a postcard in every mailbox in Virginia, in addition to sending this out to, to over 10,000 businesses, business associations, Small Business Development Center, Hampton Roads Chamber, all of the contacts within the, our SWAM procurement office, and I see, I'm pointing at La Vera, I see La Vera in the room. And so, so yes, in addition to doing a, a broad advertising sort of electronically, we also, I think, Vice Mayor, this may have been your idea, we put, we put a postcard in every mailbox in Virginia Beach, educating people on these programs. And so certainly we would anticipate that if you all told us to go into, to move in this direction, that we would, that we would do at least that much again.
All right. Anybody else? You know, Taylor, let me say, a number of years ago, the Process Improvement Task Force did a study on the barriers to business startup and expansion. Number one problem, number one barrier they had was securing financing.
Yes, sir.
And the thing is, I think this is a remarkable step forward, you know, when combined with another initiatives with the Hive and the incubators that we're going to be doing, and, you know, really, really establishing ourselves as a pro-business environment. And so at this point, you know, unless there's objections, you know, let's move forward and come up with a win-win.
Lower the ability to do smaller tier grants, right? And then see if we can possibly relax, get LISC to relax the two-year requirement. And then it sounds like council is amenable towards, moving towards an appropriate interest rate.
Does that sound about right for everybody? Okay. I think, give it a go. Greenlight.
Thank you. And, and Mayor, I'll just say thank you as, as I walk out. This is, this is something that certainly our small business community, I believe, would welcome. And I want, I want to thank, thank my boss for, for greenlighting us to run ahead of you just a little bit and put this together. So thank you all for your help with this.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, Letitia Shelton, our Finance Director, will come and give a quarterly interim financial update.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Under the hot lights. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, City Council. I'm Letitia Shelton, your City Director of Finance, here to present to you the interim finance report through February of '23. Okay, here we go. General Fund revenues through February are $660 million and are 49.5% of the budget, exceeding last year by 16.9 million. The general fund expenditures are $913.9 million, or 65.74% of the '23 budget, and exceeds last year by 14.2 million. Local revenues are on target to meet budget. Just to highlight a few of them, real estate tax revenue is $323.3 million, which is 52% of the current year's budget, and is more than the prior year by 14 million. This is due to a 9.3% increase in the real estate assessments. The first half of the real estate levy was due on December 5th of 2022, and the current collection percentage on this levy is 99.4%, which is consistent with the prior years. The second half of the levy will be due June 5th of 2023. Personal property tax revenue is $27.3 million, which is 19.6% of the current year's budget, and is also consistent with prior years. General sales tax revenue is $54.9 million, which is 58.4% of the current year's budget, and is more than the prior year by 1.7 million. Sales tax is only two-month lag, and so the year-to-date total represents July 22nd, July of 2022 through December of 2022. Restaurant meal tax revenue is $38.7 million, which is 68% of the current year's budget, and exceeds the prior year by 2.2 million. Meal tax is only one-year lag, I'm sorry, not a one-year lag. It's on a one-month lag, which represents sales tax from, meal tax from June 22 through January of '23.
Yeah.
So up there it says YTD budget. Is that YTD budget or just the budget for the year? Because year-to-date?
Yes, year-to-date.
Year-to-date?
Yes.
Budget?
Budget. Year-to-date budget.
We're way off then.
Which, you were talking about the personal property tax?
All, so the columns under YTD budget, YTD actual, and then YTD actual as a percent of budget, wouldn't it be close to 100% or close to it if it's YTD budget versus actual? Wait, I can ask you offline.
Okay. Kevin, did you want to?
It's the annual budget. Right. Okay, not YTD.
You good?
Thank you.
General expenditures on target to meet the budget. Just want to note personnel costs through February. General government staff, $179.6 million. Public safety is $123 million. This is through, again, this is through February, 17 of 26 pay periods. And just to brief you a little bit on where we are with the American Rescue Plan, as mostly we can remember on March 11th of 2021, the President signed the American Rescue Plan Act. The Department of Treasury made a direct, was authorized to make direct appropriations to states, territories, and cities. City of Virginia Beach was fortunate to receive $136.4 million, of which council was abreast of this on May 25th of 2021. And at that time, council noted to the city manager their priorities for how they wanted us to use these funds. So what you see before you are the council priorities for the ARPA funding. So stormwater consists of stormwater projects. The economic support and assistance consists of funds distributed to United Way Food Banks and the Food Bank. Facility, facilities and repairs consist of building projects and public work, I'm sorry, public parks and recs projects. Broadband is the regional broadband project. Behavior, mental, behavior or mental health consists of the Virginia Beach Psych and Healthcare Services. Affordable housing includes the Seaton Youth Shelter, Samaritan House, the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, the Judeo-Christian Outreach Center, and the emergency housing vouchers. And of course, we have the premium pay that went to our public safety sector. Next slide, Jess. So here, you can see the projects that are, where the funds were allocated, how much has been obligated for those projects, total years spent, and what's remaining. These projects, the federal guidelines that we have until December of 2024 to spend the funding, after which all funding has to be turned back into the treasury. The one exception to that is with the projects, if the money has already been encumbered on a contract, we can continue working on that project until December 31st of 2026. Next slide. So this is just a continuation of how the money has been allocated to some of the nonprofit organizations, United Way, Food Bank, Seaton Youth Services, Samaritan, just so you can see where the spending is with these nonprofit contributions. And this is the last, the other parts that we had was premium pay, again, was for public safety, and then some of the other non, excuse me, health organizations. We do meet with them quarterly to find out where they are with their spending. I do have to submit to the Federal Treasurer quarterly on our spending, so we're keeping abreast of where things are.
Okay, any questions?
Can you go back about the housing?
Yes, ma'am.
When you were mentioning BBD, the Samaritan House and?
Affordable housing.
No, is?
No, she's, one more, Jess, right there.
Yeah.
They're part of the affordable housing.
Yes, for that. As I serve on the Housing Advisory Board, and so that's, you know, with my interest about that. Now, when you said United Way of Southampton Roads, and we're looking at the housing, I thought they were helping to give out the money? Or can you explain something?
So United Way, that's not housing. United Way, that's the BB Thrive Program. That's the one with the wraparound assistance to help the Alice families with financial sufficiency. So that may have a housing component. If they're struggling to pay rent, they may give them financial support to pay their rent for the participants there. The Food Bank is to provide additional food. Seaton Youth Shelter, Samaritan House, Judeo-Christian Outreach Center, those are affordable housing or some aspect of housing.
Okay, now, the Virginia Beach, the Community Development, do they get any of this amount?
What, I'm not sure if council gave them ARPA funds?
Yes, the Virginia Community Development Corporation received funds for the West Neck Village and Skalborough project. I don't have that with me, but I can get that for you.
I'm just kind of comparing how, you know, because everywhere we go, even at the, last night, Josh and I at our Aragona, the whole talk about housing and affordable housing and so forth. So that's why you see it twixt my interest about how that money was allocated. I know about the Judeo and the Samaritan House, Community Development, right? Not the United Way for the housing.
No, United Way basically used their fund for, they have a program called the?
BB Thrive?
Yes.
Anyone else?
Can you, hi, thank you for this presentation. Can you help me understand the behavioral and mental health category and the plans for the budget items there?
Letitia, we could send a report back.
Yeah, I can send out a report that has the detail on it.
Okay, anybody else at this point? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Look forward to your next visit.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time.
Welcome.
Hello.
Good to see you.
So Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time, our purchasing manager, La Vera Tolentino, will provide an update on our SWAM business program.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and members of City Council. I am La Vera Tolentino, Purchasing Manager, and I also served as the SWAM Program Coordinator or Administrator for the SWAM Program for the city. And so today, what I'd like to do is to provide you with our annual report on FY22 numbers for awards and expenditures to SWAM businesses. These are businesses that do business with the city, and it's actually women and minority owned businesses and service-disabled veteran-owned businesses. And that report, we've broken it down into five categories. It's going to be an overall total awards and expenditures, total prime and subcontracts, and then we have by contract type, and then we'll look at ethnicity and gender, and then we'll also look at the service-disabled veteran- And then we'll also look at the service-disabled veteran-owned report as well. And then each section also has comparison data. So the first slide is the overall minority and woman-owned business enterprise awards. As you can see in FY22, total awards, and these are competable dollars that we have done, we've done solicitations on, or some kind of, some form of solicitation. So the overall total awards for FY22 was 494 million. And then compared to FY21, the total awards were 310 million. That's total award, including everything we did as far as solicitations. Of that 494 million in FY22, 54 million went to minority-owned businesses in awards, and then 62 million went to woman-owned businesses, for a total of 117 million to minority and woman-owned businesses combined. And then if you look at the comparison in FY21, you will see that that is an increase in FY22 over FY21 numbers there. When we look at the actual spend, this is the actual checks that were cut to woman and minority-owned businesses and businesses overall. So in FY22, the total amount spent was 362 million as compared to FY21, 227 million. And then when we, when we look at, we break it down to minority-owned businesses, we see 45 million. And when we look at woman-owned businesses, we see 49 million, and a total of 94 million for woman and minority-owned businesses. And that is in the spend category. Again, if you look at the FY21 spend, you will see a significant increase in FY22 numbers with those two categories. When we look at, what we do is we break this up into prime contracts and then subcontracts. So prime contracts are direct checks that we cut to a prime contractor. They are the prime, they do not, they may have subcontractors and some may not. So when we look at the prime contract, we're going to go again to awards and spend. Minority-owned businesses received 46 million again. This is just prime contracts. And then woman-owned businesses received $54 million of that. And again, when you look at the spend in comparison, and this is FY22, 43 million and 45 million respectively on those two numbers there. And the next slide will have the subcontracting dollars and spend on those. Subcontracting in that area, minority and woman-owned businesses received a total of 44.6 million in total awards, and then 34 million in FY21 in total spend. But again, when you look at our FY, our numbers compared on the next slide, you'll be able to see we broke it down and we can show you FY20. Then we go to FY20, FY, and FY21 on those as well. So again, FY22, you see this number, and then FY21, the next slide. Okay, FY, nope, go back. FY21 subcontracting, this is just the comparison of our minority-owned business and woman-owned business awards and spend compared to FY22. Again, you see a significant increase in the dollars and the awards spent with minority-owned businesses and woman-owned businesses in the subcontracting area of our, of our contracts with the city. Next slide. So here, we break it down according to contract type, where we talk about goods and services, professional services, construction and A&E services. Again, if you look at these numbers, you'll see quite a significant, a significant increase as opposed to FY21 and FY22 numbers as well. And we have the variances listed on the side of these also. And then we break it down even further to say, just to give you the MBE awards, minority-owned business awards and spend in the various categories as well. As you can tell, with minority-owned businesses, the, the total awards and spend are much higher than in FY21 awards and spend. So again, the next slide will show the one for woman-owned businesses and awards and spend in the different categories, goods and services, professional services, A&E services, and construction. And then as we go through, we break it down to race and ethnicity and gender as well when we look at the awards and spend data. And on this particular one, we also have a comparison slides as well. So you'll see that with the race and ethnicity categories, we have for FY22, awards, awards amounted to for black Americans, 27.7 million. And then we have Hispanic Americans at 9.1 million. And then subcontinent Asian-American-owned businesses at 7.6. Asian Pacific, Asian slash Pacific Islanders at 10.2 million. And then non-Hispanic white women at 62 million. In comparison to FY21, you can see a significant increase in those numbers as, as well. And then this one we gave you as FY20, because at the end of the slide, you'll see the different, we have a different chart there. We will show you the, the actual trend, the upward trend that we have showing there. Next slide. Where related to awards, these particular slides, the next three slides will, will relate to spend data. Again, we broke it down into ethnicity. And as you can tell here, again, there has been an increase in the amount of spend to the various categories or ethnicities and, and gender as well. So this is FY22 numbers. And then the next slide will be the FY21 numbers. And then we also have the FY20 numbers, if you want to go to the next slide. And then that's the FY20. This particular slide, this is the one that's going to give you the summation or the synopsis of kind of how we've trended over the past three years. And you can tell we've, we've been consistent. We've had an upward trend in our dollars that have been spent with minority and woman-owned businesses and city contracting. And that relates to award and spend. If you look at the award amounts, you can see in FY20, the awards to minority and woman-owned businesses combined was 40.5 million dollars. If you look at the award dollars in FY21, there's 67.6 million dollars. And if you look at FY22, you will see that's combined 117.6 million dollars. And then when we look at that, and as, as a means of spend in FY20, you'll see 51.5 million dollars. In FY21, you'll see 52.1 million. And then FY22, 94.6 million dollars. As we look at, when we go to service-disabled veteran-owned businesses, what I would like to point out is that our services, service-disabled veteran-owned businesses are self-reported in most cases. And in most cases, they are also a part of the minority or woman-owned business group as well. So we still notice an upward trend when we look at our service-disabled veteran-owned businesses as it relates to awards and spend. For FY22, you'll see 3.1 as the total awards and 3 million for the total spend. And then the next slide will show you FY21 in comparison to that, where you can see a significant increase in awards and spend with our service-disabled veteran-owned businesses. And then this slide also gives you FY20, which you can also see an increase in that as well, compared to FY22. So summation, you know, in conclusion, what I would like to say is that after the disparity study was done in 2018, let me go back, before the disparity study was done, our minority-owned business participation goal in city contracting was 10% of total city dollars. So after the disparity study and through the recommendations of this body, with those recommendations that were posed by the company, the firm that did the disparity study, our aspirational goals for minority-owned businesses and city contracting were changed. They were increased to 12%. And then with that, we established aspirational goals for woman-owned businesses as well as service-disabled veteran-owned businesses. Woman-owned businesses, their aspirational goal, 13.3%. Veteran-owned businesses, 11.9%. So what I would like to see, and this, I think this is like, this is my aha moment. This is like the, one of the, I can say, one of the best moments that I can sit here and present this report to you and tell you that since that disparity study and since the recommendations that you looked at and that you asked us to implement, the city has actually exceeded the goal of minority-owned business spend, which was 12%, as you can see here, it's 12.4%. And then when it really comes to woman-owned businesses, we've also exceeded that goal as well. And it's at 13.3%, and we've done 13.6%. So like I said, coming into this, it was, you know, we, we did a lot through our programs that we've had, our SWAM Business Office, along with leadership. Of course, with your approval and adoption of city ordinances and resolutions, we've been able to achieve, will exceed the goal that was established. And so with that, I will take any questions at this time.
Rocky. Thank you, and thank you for that presentation. If you could go back to, I think it was slide nine. It was going a little quick through there.
Okay. Do you remember what it had on there?
It had a minus, it had a minus 68% on one of the awards. It said, yeah, I think it might have been. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that, the architecture and engineering, is that a minus 69.6?
That, that would be true. So what, what happens when we have award and spend dollar amounts? Sometimes the project is awarded in one fiscal year, and then the spend takes place over a subsequent year. So it could be over maybe one or two, depending on the size of the project. So that could be the reason, the reason for that. Or we just finished up a project, and so that could be the reason for that, because that's in comparison to FY21.
That just caught my attention with the big number. And the, the next question I have is, when you talked about your numbers doubling, percentages doubling on that last slide, what was the methodology to get that, that you wanted to see it go up to 13%? Or after disparity study, you wanted to see it at 13%? Where, what was the methodology for that too?
Councilmember Holcomb, were you asking about how the goals were set?
Yeah, yeah.
The goals were set after the disparity study. So council authorized the disparity study. And when the disparity study recommendations came, council passed a subsequent ordinance or resolution adopting disparity study findings with those goals. And council may have accepted the goals that came from disparity study. They may have plus them up. So basically, those goals came from that.
Okay, thank you. Hey, anybody else, Chris, and then you go, Mike.
I just want to offer some reflections, if I could. I served on the Human Rights Commission when this discussion was raised by members of our community, and I want to applaud them and express my appreciation for their efforts to bring this attention, bring much-needed attention to this issue about the disparities that exist in city contracting. And I had the privilege, along with a number of other human rights commissioners, to participate in the first march on Atlantic Avenue to demonstrate support for moving the disparity study forward. And as a member of the Human Rights Commission, we had the opportunity to vote to support the city moving forward with the disparity study, which revealed what those advocates told us for many, many years, which was that there was, there is disparity in city contracting. And so I'm really pleased to see how far we've come from that point, not only in the awareness about the disparity, but efforts to address those disparities. And I was certain, had the privilege to serve as a member of city council in 2019 when we set that aspirational goal of 12%. I'm only sharing this just to express how, how long of a road this has been. And that's, and that's just that part of it. There's been people advocating for this for many, many, many years and a long time before that. And those people deserve a lot of credit for elevating these issues and making sure the city addressed them fairly. And I just had a chance through civic engagement to have a seat to witness that and to provide what support I could at the time. I also think that the city staff deserve a lot of credit in terms of creating an environment where businesses can be successful in procuring contracts with the city. And I, I think the business community should, should be applauded for, and the SWAM business community should be applauded, and Virginia Beach and Hampton Beach should be applauded for activating and empowering entrepreneurism. So anyway, that's all to say, we've come a long way from where we were just a few years ago, and that should be very encouraging, I hope. I want the community to really have a sense of how encouraging that is from where we were. People felt so shut out, they had to march down Atlantic Avenue and then follow that up with subsequent demonstrations to get attention to these issues that they've been talking about for a long time, to where we are today, exceeding the aspirational goals that were set in 2019. So there's a lot of room for optimism, in my view, and to be encouraged and even proud of where we are now from where we were just a few short years ago. But I guess my question is, where do we go from here? Based on your experience and, you know, you know, aspirational goal was set in 2019, 12%, that goal has been exceeded. So what do we do next?
Okay.
So Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think it was last budget, council approved the update of the disparity study. And basically, every five years or five to six years, you should update it to kind of make sure that you are tackling a real disparity or, or, or a specific issue for it to be legally undefendable. So what we're doing right now is we're in a process now of putting out a RFP to seek a firm to review the city's goals and to give another update to let, to the city council know, does disparity still exist? And if a disparity still exists, where is that disparity? And then also advise and recommend to city council a possible next step of where to go. For example, should you continue with this program? And should you, or should you have different aspirational goals? So the goal of that would be to get that information across so you can make that policy decision on where do we go from here.
I appreciate that, and I'm, I'm looking forward to that conversation. And maybe at a subsequent briefing, we could have an update on how the business community that have been, and, and civic leaders who have been part of this discussion can participate and inform those next steps. I'd be curious how we're checking in with them, the advocates who initiated this conversation and determine their point of view and how follow-up should occur. But I do have one specific question. If you go to slide three. Looks like, I'm just looking at these charts. So I'm looking at 2022, and I see the sort of chart on the left, on my left. So I see 12.4% and 13.6%. Obviously totaling somewhere around 25%. But is the number we're measuring as our aspirational goal, the minority-owned number? In other words, or, or was the aspirational goal inclusive of woman-owned businesses as well?
They are separate aspirational goals. So minority-owned business goal was 12% aspirational, and woman-owned businesses was 13.3%.
Okay, understood, thank you. And then one final question. I know when we were talking about this years ago, there was a question about what the market, what was in the marketplace in terms of minority-owned businesses? And that, you know, that's part of the systemic challenges, that there weren't as, there weren't, and a lot of my, there weren't enough minority-owned businesses in the marketplace to compete in these areas. Have you seen that change? Are there more, is there more activation? I mean, I know, I know anecdotally there is. But how do those, how do those numbers compare now? And what can we do to continue to unlock that potential, to expand that pool of qualified women and minority-owned businesses?
Well, as you notice in the slides, at the end, where we broke it down by category, goods and services, construction and A&E, goods and services, construction and A and E, our minority owned firms, we don't see a lot of them in the A and E type, you know, that category type. But as far as construction and goods and services, there are a significant number there. And the disparity study was also based on the availability and the utilization of those firms. So within this disparity study, they, they did an analysis on the availability of firms in those particular categories.
Yeah, and with, I guess with the follow up would reveal the growth.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Chris, anybody else? Patrick?
Mr. Belucci, I'll caveat the question or the response to just noting the fact that the disparity study got passed in 2019, basically came into effect 2020, 21. And that was in the height of pandemic as well. So we saw a lot of decrease in the number of businesses, small, minority and large firms that was willing, ready and able to do business because of the pandemic impacts on that. So it'll be interesting to see how the next disparity study approaches that because that, this was definitely not a normal period of time. And just the fact that we're able to kind of show that kind of growth in that period of time as well is, is basically, I think remarkable and pretty amazing, I think.
I think it is too, I'm sorry, one, one, I just think we've come a long way from a scenario in which people felt they had to march down Atlantic Avenue to have their voices heard on this issue to now where we are with broader representation and I think a more clear willingness to take on these issues and take a look at all of the parts, the ugly parts, history, the challenges, and be honest about what the next steps are. So there is a lot of reason for optimism and there's still a lot of work to do.
Thank you.
And you know, and if I can say, you know, as, you know, I was involved with the Minority Business Council for my 14 year tenure. You know, one of the problems that we identified over time was to make sure that folks at least had the capacity and the tools to move forward. And we did certain things that were barriers that we were able to get rid of in terms of, you know, for instance, we started a contractors institute and then we brought some of the biggest corporations and, and they explained what they wanted to, you know, be qualified to be subs and things of that nature. We did bundling because once again, they found out if people were able to, you know, jointly apply that would increase their capacity to do. We also did a thing that, back at a time, there was a very high bond requirement that we were able to lobby with our general assembly to get that too. And then now you combine that with the synergy of what the Laverne and economic development are doing, you know, with the, you know, the, you know, the center that, and we're encouraging and giving businesses the path to move forward.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry, resume.
It's very exciting to see this kind of results in such a short amount of period. I, I think we should be, not resting on laurels, but you know, I remember Lyle Sumick used to always tell us, you know, you don't forget to celebrate your successes. So this is a great step and I, I think it's, it's really wonderful. I am really curious because I think we, we passed something that encouraged the schools to work on some goals like this and also how we compare to our sister cities around the region.
So the Minority Business Council did ask the schools to think about participating in the next disparity study. I don't know where that is, you know, what the results of that was. But compared to our sister cities, we are a leader in this area. Many of them don't have programs like you have authorized and approved us to have here in Virginia Beach. We've had not just our local sister cities here, but from other states in our country have reached out to us and asked how do we do it? Can you give us some tips? You know, what did you do? I just had an interview with a young lady from Canada who, she's doing her thesis on, you know, implementing SWAM programs and she wanted to know how, how we were able to do it. The first answer I always give is leadership. It's, it's gotta be leadership wanting it for it to be, for it to work. So we, we rank very high up there, not just locally, but throughout the country.
Very exciting, thank you.
Okay, Amelia?
And I just want to mention during my previous time on council, when some of these were coming up, it took me at 2012 to 2016, the city, as you mentioned, with leadership did help because you will recall how, he's from Hampton University, we set up that incubator, was able to talk with the former mayor to see if he was willing to put 50,000 in for that to happen. So it's been incremental, but it's moving forward, which is great. And I just wondered, with all of this new investment awards, are you all tracking its impact on the city itself? Because they're getting awards, before then was mainly goods and services and not so much. I remember us talking about what happens if a big construction prime does not give to smaller businesses? What is the penalty and so forth? But now that things are moving in this direction, are you tracking high impacts, the city on the whole?
So.
Businesses are more creative, what are you seeing?
So one of the programs that we have done since the disparity study is a growth activities program. And so what that does, it brings, it allow businesses to come in and go through a program, a whole series of like 12 months to, to kind of grow their business, to see where they can grow it. What we also do is we, one of the ordinances, it's the project goals ordinance where we do, we have a SWAM compliance specialist who actually tracks the utilization of the firms, of the subcontractors. And so we, we have different mechanisms in place to do that. And so it's just a, a process of getting companies aware that we're doing these things. We have different workshops and things of that nature as well.
Yeah, Patrick?
Dr. Ross, I have an additional note for that as well as that as part of the disparity study update, they'll take a comprehensive look and a regional look to get a sense of the impact of what our dollars have been doing, you know? And I would note as well, I think the primary criteria that they assess us by is spend and not awards because award is very cyclical. Like for example, probably one of the reasons why we saw that negative decline in the architectural and engineering services is that we procure those on a cyclical basis. For example, we do a lot of annual service agreements that have a three to five year term. And sometimes what that means is that in 2001, you went out for procurement, you award a lot of engineering contracts, but you may not go back out for that contract again till about 2024, you know? So some, they don't really hold you accountable for awards on an industry standard, but it's more like spend, it's like how you're getting your money out, when you actually award the contract and you're actually doing the work and you spend the money with the firms. Spend is actually money getting into people's pockets versus award may come to reality or may not come to reality. Sometimes you could award a contract and then council makes other policy decisions because of funding realities that may necessarily mean you spend less on that contract.
Okay, Jen?
Um, Livia, thank you for your presentation. And I want to give kudos to Livia because you're a leader in this space as well. If you've got people from Canada calling Virginia Beach, so you get some guidance on what we're doing. I know with NBC Minority Business Council, you all are doing a lot of work with resources and education. Will you just shout out your podcast?
Oh, yes, for sure. So the SWAM business office, we recently did a podcast where we feature, you know, one of the, one of the episodes was actually the ripple effect. And then we also bring in companies that have done some subcontracting for a prime contractor. So it's, it's available on the SWAM business office webpage. And so we are into our second series of the podcasts. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Livia, thank you so much. You bring so much, you know, to the program and you are the heart and soul of the reflective numbers that we see and we thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Monica Copan, our co-acting director for the Human Resources Department, give council an update on our staffing and recruitment efforts.
Hey, welcome.
Did it work?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me today. I am talking to you today about staffing update. It's a continuation of a presentation that Regina Hilliard started last year in reference to our pandemic recovery efforts and how we're staffing the city. This is a subject that's near and dear to my heart. It has to do with employing people and retaining people and doing the great services that we provide to the citizens and visitors of Virginia Beach. So thank you for having me and I hope you guys are going to get a lot of good information here and I'll be able to answer any questions you have at the end. So before I get started, I kind of wanted to give you a little bit of a background as far as how staffing the city has historically worked. I think historically, local, state, federal governments have kind of been very fortunate in that they have been able to not have as proactive of a recruitment effort as maybe the private sector. We did what we called posting and praying. You post a job, you pray people will apply for it. And it was successful for years because the value proposition statement for government was that we really had great benefits. We had a defined retirement plan. There was stability in working for the government. And I, over time, that value proposition statement, it changed a little bit. And there's a bunch of different theories as to why that changed, but the reality is I think it was a combination of factors of an emerging workforce that maybe didn't value a defined retirement quite as much as its predecessors. Maybe the private sector got a little bit more savvy and started offering some benefits that were more competitive with the public sector. So we got to a point probably a little bit after the 2008 recession where we realized that maybe our applicant pools were a little bit smaller than they had been before. And they weren't quite as robust as what we would have liked to have seen when we were filling our vacancies. So we started looking at some ways that we could be a little bit more proactive. And we got some individuals hired that would be able to help us and we partnered with our communications office to get more presence or to have a greater presence on social media. We also started looking to repurpose our current vacancies for, to get a recruiter position. And we were really very, very excited to do so. And we were slated to have a recruiter start July 1 of 2020, which was absolutely the worst timing ever because May of 2020, everything was cut. So we were unable to hire that recruiter that year, which was unfortunate again because I had already written the job description and I was ready to go. But the, it took us about two more years to get that position put back in the budget. So we were finally able to do so last year or in July of 2022. But at that point, we'd also suffered what was kind of, I guess, not so fondly called the great resignation of August of 2021. You guys might have heard of it. It made quite a bit of headlines across the country, whereas I guess everyone just walked off the job one day in August, if you read, if you believe what you read. But the reality is, is that there was a lot of turnover in most businesses during that time and the city was not an exception. I think that the world was prepared for what we called the silver tsunami and, but we had hoped that that would happen in a wave, but it didn't. It happened very quickly after the, after the pandemic. So the city, and again, every other organization in the world, we were saying, okay, what do we do next? How do we recover in this post pandemic world or post pandemic employment space and succeed moving forward? So we have done some, some things since then to, in order to encourage the city's recovery. And I'm going to go through a few of them and then talk to you a little bit about the future. Wrong way. So good news, we had 712 vacancies in March of 2020. I gave you that date because that's when everything fell apart. And we have got about 704 vacancies now. What that means is that we are recovering from the pandemic. That means that we are back to where we were pre pandemic. Would we like to see those vacancies a little bit lower? For sure. And we're going to talk to some of the measures that we're taking to get there. But that's good news. There's a lot of employers that cannot say that they have gotten to that point in their recovery to where their vacancy numbers are the same. A little bit of perspective is that the peak vacancy in January of 2022 was 878 vacancies. And I've been with the city for 20 years now and I can tell you, I've never seen anything like the employment space that we've been in in the past two years. It has been absolutely a wild ride. And there was a lot of hard work that went into getting those vacancies because we also added close to 100 positions last July 1, back down to that pre pandemic level. So we're continuing to recover and the competition is fierce because so is everyone else. So some additional signs of recovery, just to give you some additional perspective, is that in 2019, we received 54,000 applications for employment. That's not 54,000 people because one person could apply to 10 jobs, but 54,000 individual applications. In 2020, again, crazy year, we also had a hiring freeze that year, we had 25,000 applications. 2021, we started to see an uptick again to about 36 plus. And then last year, we were at 42,000. I think the more significant number though, is the number of vacancies that we filled each year. So if you look, we hired, it had been 2019 and 2020, amazingly enough, a comparable number of full time positions. 2021, even despite the high vacancy numbers, we were still hiring like gangbusters. We hired 1,330 people in 2021. These are again, full time, not part time. And then last year, we had 1,708 full time vacancies that were filled. So the departments, your hiring managers, HR, everyone was working at Mach 10, trying to make some impact on some of the, the vacancies that we had. So how does that break down? 1,070 of those hires were external hires. That means they were not current city employees. 638 were competitive processes internally. So that means that your workforce was competitive and successfully got a promotion. 498 were promotions. There were about 100 or so that were transfers, lateral transfers. And then we had some full, um, part time to full time vacancies, um, part time to full time billing of vacancies as well, which means that you have part time workforce that are transferring into full time employment, which is always a great thing to have too. So what did we do to impact those numbers and what are we continuing to do? So in January of 2022, when the fallout from 2021 really started to become apparent, the former director and I met with Patrick and we said, hey, we really need to do some things. We need to make sure that we are being competitive. We need to make sure that we can react quickly in this market. And historically, the way the city would hire an employee is you would post a job. Again, you'd pray for people to kind of apply to it, but it would close, human resources would screen a pool of applicants and then they would send a qualified pool of applicants to a hiring manager. That was taking way too long. So we opened up our applicant tracking system to where hiring managers had access to the applications as soon as somebody applied. And that was very effective. That meant that hiring managers could go in once a week, they could go in every day, they could go in and they could see who had applied for the job, go ahead and screen and react to that applicant. So that was one thing that we, we were very successful in kind of speeding up that process. Some other things that we did is we created some bonus programs. The CDL program, there was a bonus in waste management that we had implemented years ago to kind of increase our waste management operator recruitment, but we extended that to public utilities, public works and parks and recreation. And then we created a stipend because just hiring them in the door wasn't that great if somebody was offering them a job somewhere else, making more money because of their CDL. So we put a stipend into place to impact that. For ECCS and police, where we had some of the greatest vacancy numbers, we started advertising a hiring bonus. And we also have some quarterly incentive or retention bonuses available to the ECCS employees. I will tell you right now that our ECCS vacancies are down to seven, which is completely, I don't think it's been that way in years. And the police vacancy numbers are down to like 44, which is also very, very good compared to what it was before, before. So additionally, this body approved the implementation of a market salary survey and a step plan, which was effective July 1. That step plan was very, very helpful in the recruitment of especially public safety folks. That was something that they were really familiar with. And when we moved to a, an area where we could hire. And when we moved to a, an area where we could hire certified officers, that as well really helped those, those efforts. And then we worked with communications to come up with some additional marketing efforts, some additional things that we could do to get the word out there. They've come up with a couple of videos that I'm going to show you. They're just some short clips here in a minute that we're using to advertise employment with the city and especially hard-to-fill jobs like nursing, trades, things like that. And then finally, I got my recruiter last July. Not only did we get the recruiter position finally funded, we got an extra one because we needed, we needed it, and I repurposed another employee, and we've created a talent acquisition team for which I'm very excited. We filled the last vacancy this past month, and I would have had them here, but guess what? They're out doing talent acquisition career fairs, and they're out making some connections that are really going to be important for the city as we move forward and building our pipeline of talent. So, what are some of the initiatives that we've embarked upon, and what are some of the things that this talent acquisition team is going to be responsible for? So, I don't know if you remember, I know some of you were involved. We had a city career fair at the convention center in October of last year. We had 500 people participate, and from that, we had 67 hires, which we were really excited about. We also are having this talent acquisition team source candidates through some online platforms, LinkedIn Recruiter. When we say source candidates, we mean we're building long-term pipelines for filling vacancies into the future. So, if you have an interaction with somebody that's a traffic engineer today, but we don't have a traffic engineer vacancy, we're staying in touch with that individual. We're still cultivating that relationship so that when we do have a traffic engineer vacancy, we're able to reach out and tap into that. We're also going to be more proactive in the veteran space. Veteran recruitment is something that you would think this is a really target-rich environment for. Some of you may have heard of the Skillbridge program. That's something that we're utilizing in police pretty successfully that we're expanding across the organization. And then I say veteran recruitment, but I want to be very clear that that also includes veteran spouses or military spouses. That's also a big population that we haven't tapped into, that we have an opportunity to interest in city employment and have them come join us as well. And then the university higher education partnerships and the career fairs are kind of combined. We've been to 40 events since July 1 of last year. So, we are really out there hitting the pavement hard, and we are definitely making sure that, I mean, recruitment's a sales game. You get out, you make the relationships, you get in front of people, and the more you do that, the more long-term investment you have, the better your results are going to be. And then for the first time this year, we're, we have an internship program, and the city's always had some interns, but we hired them through Abacus. And this is the first year that Mr. DeHaene has allowed us to create temporary part-time positions that we've been able to hire them through the city, and it's important because that way we can track them, too, and we can cultivate those relationships. So, if they're a sophomore between their junior, or they're sophomore and junior year, and they come and they spend 10 weeks with us this summer, we want to go ahead and keep that relationship going with them so that when they do graduate, or they know other people that, you know, would be interested in city employment, that we have this positive experience to build upon, and then we also want to track it as well. So, and then we also have a brazen platform, which is an online career fair platform that we use to have virtual events. We have weekly virtual events where people can log in and talk to a recruiter. We usually have about 15 people a week that go in, and we do special events. We do, you know, how to market yourself and interviews. We do all kinds of special events on there. And then finally, we are enhancing our supervisor training. A lot of hiring managers, a lot of feedback that we got was that, you know, hiring's hard, which is true, but also that they needed additional resources for them to be successful at it. How do you hire somebody that is the right fit? How do you negotiate salary? So, this talent acquisition group is going to have some one-hour, two-hour sessions on that as well. So, what are some of the things that are indicators that our workforce is growing and doing well because retention is just as important as recruitment? And that is that, you know, those 498 employees that were a part of that earlier number, they were promoted. So, that means they successfully competed for a higher-level job in the organization, which means we are growing our employees. The 434 employees that were non-competitively progressed, those are employees that were progressed from like a one to a two level. Sometimes people call it career pathing, but maybe they were an electrician two and they became an electrician three, or they were a office assistant one and they became an office assistant two. So, they progressed in their career path to the next level. Thanks to the implementation of the step plan, the average employee salary was moved from $59,000 to $63,000. So, that's a little bit shy of a 7% increase. And then our turnover reduced, and this is voluntary turnover, not including retirements, from 10.5% in 2021 to 9.2% in 2022. So... And then just to give you some additional information about our workforce demographics, because this also impacts how we recruit and how, what benefits or what things that we offer to our employees based on where they are, and the average tenure with the city employee is 10.21 years, but 42% of our workforce has less than five years of service. I will tell you that of the, that of the employees that have less than five years of service, 40% of our turnover, so 40% of that 9.2% that I gave you earlier, it occurs in the first year, and that's what we're looking to impact by some of our programming. Our average employee, oh, I'm sorry, 11.1% of our employees are veterans, which is, which is pretty good, but we do think that we can increase that number as well. And the average age of city employee is 43, which I'm officially older than. For years, I was not. But the racial demographic of the city of Virginia Beach is, or of our employees, is pretty similar to the racial demographic of the beach. The only area for which we're a little bit low is on the Asian, the 3.6%. The city population that identifies as Asian is a little bit higher than that, but the rest of our demographics pretty much align with the city demographics. So, what are some of our future considerations that we need to, in order to be competitive into the future and to retain our current employees? And some of the things that we really want to focus on in the future is the flexibility in policy and procedures to be proactive and respond quickly to the market. If COVID taught us anything, it's that ability to be nimble and ability to react to the market. That's going to be very helpful in moving forward. The market salary surveys, we need to conduct them at regular intervals. We had them at 2011, and then we didn't fund another one until 2021, and it's just, it's hard to stay on top of what's happening in the market because different occupations, they go up and down in the market at different times, and it's, it's usually in a shorter period. We want to continue to fund proactive recruitment activities. In 2008, one of the first things that was cut, I mean, there were a lot of things that we had to cut right after that, but it was money to go to career fairs and money to do some of these recruitment activities. We want to make sure that we continue to foster those things. And then we want to make sure that we enhance our training and onboarding activities or initiatives. We want to make sure that that employee hiring experience, which really extends into that first year that I was telling you that we had experienced our most turnover, we want to make sure that we continue to touch base with those new employees and try to impact that number. You know, I think you know that inflation is a hot topic right now, and it definitely impacts employees and the fact that it often will drive them, if they feel like they're not appropriately compensated, they will look elsewhere for that. So, we have to always be looking at our employee proposition statement to say, what is our salary and our benefits and our work-life balance look like in comparison to our peers, and how are we stacking up against that? And then the rise in healthcare costs is a consideration. I think you've gotten a memo on what some of the reductions in the employee premiums were on the school side, which is a little bit different for our employees where they had always aligned in the past. State pay increases, they, they may be a little bit higher this year. And the average employer increase, if you look holistically across the nation, they're estimating to be about 5% this year. So, most organizations are indicating that that's around the amount that they'll be giving for employee increases. The city has a possibility of collective bargaining. You guys had indicated that after we get through the budget process that you'd like to at least have that conversation. And unfortunately, there does, there is a prediction that there's going to continue to be some workforce shortages. I think right now, they're saying anywhere, depending on what you read, that there's 1.2, or 1.9 to 2.9 jobs for every person that's looking for a job. And that just means, again, that we have to stay competitive. We have to constantly be looking at what we're doing in order to make sure that we're an attractive employer. So, let me see. And I've got a couple of videos, but I was going to go ahead and take any questions if you had those beforehand.
Any questions at this point? Yeah, Michael.
I do have a question. You know, I'm thinking about my own career choices and professional path, and the things that are important to me now, I didn't have any consciousness of when I was entering the workforce, professional workforce. Thinking about retirement, thinking about those benefits, particularly around retirement, but all, the whole benefit package. Career stability, opportunities for professional advancement, which are abundant in an organization like the city of Virginia Beach. And, you know, Chris and I were just trying to whisper, I don't know how good we were with it, but talking about the age of the workforce, which I don't know if that's high. 43 sounds like it's high, but I don't know how that ranks up. So, that's one question. I don't know how that ranks up to other organizations, but I'll get to my point. But is that normal? Is that number standard? Is it high? Is it low?
I don't know that other organizations report out on that as, as much as the public sector would, but I can check into it. I don't know off the top of my head if we're high or low or average.
So, I guess, I guess the basis of my question is, there's so many, as we think about trying to fill these vital, just these vital vacancies that citizens rely upon the services they provide, how can we, how are you communicating to the, to the workforce, emerging workforce, the benefits of working in an organization like the city of Virginia Beach or in public service that are, that go beyond, you know, here's your paycheck, here's your benefit package? Think about what the public sector, there's a whole amazing path. You may not become a millionaire, but also you won't. Maybe on the side.
There's a possibility as well.
There's a possibility, there's a possibility you could take the knowledge that you have and do something else with it later, but you might, you, you won't. But, but also, you could make a very comfortable living in a way that isn't available in other fields, other professional professions. So, how, I'm just wondering if there's a more creative way, I'm not being critical, but if there's a more creative way of conveying the value of that employment choice to young people who are entering the workforce in a way that really captures their attention, their imagination, and kind of entices them in to find value in the things that I didn't understand and really no one told me about.
We, we do have a very active presence on LinkedIn, if you want to look, if you want to follow our page on LinkedIn, and we do put information on there about the full-time.
Can't apply, though.
We do put information on there about the full-time benefits, and we, we will put things on there about, did you know that we have maternity leave or that we have full-time short-term disability or, you know, for employees? And we try to capitalize on some of the things that, that we.
Or VRS.
We do, Defined Retirement Plan. And then also, I mentioned earlier that brazen platform that we use, which is an online platform. We have sessions where we can title, and I think we've done one or two about our benefits, but it speaks to the benefits of working in a public employer, and those are things we'd go over.
I think, too, Monica's not giving herself credit. That's basically the value proposition. Every time one of her recruiters meets somebody that's interested or even one that kicks the tire on a city position, it's just selling that business case of why being a public-sector employee makes sense, you know? But we get a lot of support from our communications department as well, and one of the big things they've been doing is working on a robust marketing campaign to help tell that story and to help people make their, see themselves in Virginia Beach. Another big way that we get to sell that as well is the beach, right? So, I mean, being, being a custodian in Pittsburgh is cold, it's tough, right? But it's probably better doing that at the beach, right? So, we do advocate as much as possible in trying to sell what we bring in terms of a value of a great quality of life in a coastal city.
Okay, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Monica, thank you very much for all the hard work that you and your staff has, has accomplished these last couple of years, and I know they've been challenging. And to, to some of Councilman Ulucci's points, I think one of the numbers that was most telling to me, and I've heard this before, at least recently, is these 932 total job advancements. And I think that, that is a, a great story to tell when you're looking to recruit people that, that there is upward mobility in working in city government, that we value our employees, and, and that, that people are, are, are given chances for advancement. So, I, congratulations on, on that number and these, these other statistics.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
You know, if I could just make, you know, you know, two quick points. Number one, when they talk about the 43 years, when the manager and I do the employee recognition awards, you'll see people 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, 40 years right here, and I think we had a couple 50 years thrown in from time to time.
We do.
So, the point is that people come here, and you don't see a lot of the traditional turnover that you see in a lot of places, which, you know, people look, in addition to the pay, you know, they want conducive working conditions and, you know, things of that nature, feel that they're being valued and they're being of value to the community. And the other thing is, you know, and I'm glad that you brought up about the step system because, you know, during the budget cycle last year, we had to, you know, show a little bit of, you know, courage and realize that in order to, you know, compete, not only to, you know, to maintain public safety, but also recruit, that was going to be essential. And then we applied it to, you know, the other things, too, which really, you know, I really think helped the overall, you know, when I do speak to employees out, out in the village, they're, you know, pretty happy with things right now. So, but once again, it's kudos to your department and being creative and just getting the job done, especially during a tough time.
Now, I would, I would be remiss if I did not also say that this is related to full-time employees. We are still having some challenges with part-time. I had a conversation with Michael at Parks and Recreation, and, you know, there are still segments of the workforce that we're really kind of working hard. You know, nursing's always going to be a tough one to fill, part-time lifeguards. We're, we're trying to be a little bit more imaginative, so hopefully we'll be able to come back and tell you in a future date how we've impacted those numbers, but that is one area that we're still really kind of struggling with.
Okay, Michael, and then Chris.
Thank you for bringing that up because I wanted to ask you a question about that, part-time workforce and a city policy around that. Someone brought, who does work, I think, part-time for the city, brought to my attention, same question, jogged our memory. There's a policy, I guess, in place that says that if you work in a part-time position, you can't work in another part-time position in the city. And, you know, the person who raised this, I want to say objected to it, but questioned the logic in that, in that it could preclude some of these positions from being filled. And I can see the pros and the cons. I mean, I can imagine some of the pros and the cons of a lot of human resource professionals, but just wonder what your thoughts were on that and if you've had a chance to evaluate that as an option to kind of fill in some of those positions.
So, I, it said, did you want to answer that, or do you want me to?
I'll, I'll start, but without, if I'm wrong, it's correct. It's something that we've heard before. It's, it's difficult to administer, and particularly with the number of employees we have, and our antiquated HCM, our Human Capital Management System, council has graciously started funding that HCM, and we're in the process of going through procurement right now, and we think with a future upgrade to our HCM, we'll be able to better allocate that and track that, you know? But it's one of the questions that I've had with Director Hilliard before she retired, and I think, Monica, you may be aware of those conversations as well, and I've been trying to get us towards that as well, but there's some issues as it relates to some legal regulations, but our ability to track it as well. And Monica, if I'm wrong or I misspoke, please feel free to correct me or, and add whatever you feel like you want to add to it as well.
We, well, he's right. It's the, the HCM cannot handle two different rates easily. So, if you're getting paid $10 an hour for one part-time job and $12 an hour for another part-time job, it doesn't, doesn't really facilitate that. And then it also doesn't allow us to, any, in any automated way, keep track of the particulars with the Fair Labor Standards Act in overtime. So, you have to make sure that if they're doing two part-time positions, that if they're in similar nature at all, that if they reach that 40-hour threshold, that we're then paying them overtime, and there's just, it's, it's just a manual process right now. But we absolutely want to move that direction, and the new HCM that we get should be able to facilitate both things, two different hourly rates and the ability to, in an automated way, be able to make sure that we're not breaking any kind of overtime provisions.
Yeah. Chris?
Thank you for the presentation. This may be a question for the city manager, but last week, we received a really insightful presentation from Tiffany of Communications and. presentation from Tiffany of Communications, and we're kind of going in a direction to more robust community engagement, um, within the districts. Would human resources be available for a town hall when we maybe have the audience and maybe they have children, grandchildren, neighbors that would be looking for employment? Is that something?
Absolutely, absolutely. We'd love to do that.
Thank you.
But I'm with, speaking of communications, I would love to show you guys a couple of things at Tiffany's group, just quick 15-second, 30-second clips, um, that are really kind of paving the way for what we call Best Job Yet.
I love this job is that I get to have an impact on the citizens of Virginia Beach. I love developmental services and watching nurses that are new to the field grow and be able to provide the care that's necessary to make sure that some of the city's most vulnerable residents get to lead their best life. We work really hard to make sure that the nurses have flexible schedules and that their needs not only are met on the job, but also at home. That is what's important for me, and that's why this is the best job yet.
So that speaks a little bit to that work-life balance and, you know, appealing to some of those things that, you know, that she said earlier. Do you have the carpenter one real quick? I think that's a.
This is my best job. I love this job. You have the freedom to get the job done in your way. It comes from within, and if you like helping people, then you could be really successful here.
That's just a couple of the, the positions that we're highlighting right now.
That's really cool.
That's really great.
Yeah.
Nice tagline.
It's got to make that smile.
He does have a good smile. And Communications came up with that, and they, um, they've been very, very helpful with partnering with us to kind of get that information together and get it out to the public. So we're just, this is just the beginning of these Best Job Yet ads that are going to be running.
Kudos. Okay, thank you very much. Very, very encouraging.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time Nancy Hellman, our Conventions and Visitors Bureau Director, will come and give council an update on our spring and summer marketing campaign.
Nancy, welcome.
Hi, how are you? Good afternoon. I think we're, just give us one second to pull up the presentation and. Well, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Duhany and Mr. Stiles. It's my favorite time of year. Spring is in the air, and although we've had a very busy fall-winter season, spring-summer is where the action is. I'm here today to give you a brief update on the 2023 spring-summer advertising and marketing campaign and the future of our advertising program. Before I begin, I would like to thank Erin Goldmeyer, John Mayer, Alex Smith, and Kelsey Tanamaza from our marketing team for their outstanding work. In addition, I'd like to thank the Advertising Advisory Committee and the council liaisons that support the committee for their oversight and leadership. There's a renewed sense of excitement in Virginia Beach, and this slide shows some of the new business coming to Virginia Beach in the coming weeks and months. Festivals, events, rodeos, and more. There is literally something for everyone. This list does not include legacy events like the Shamrock Marathon, which will be this weekend, the North American Sand Soccer Championship, the Neptune Festival, and more. Over the past three years, you've been on this journey with us through COVID, the recovery from COVID, and now looking through the rearview mirror. Our campaign, which started out as we're open, quickly had to evolve into our beaches are open, and quite literally showed that our beaches remained open throughout COVID. The following season, we continued on the theme of openness and embraced our community in extending an open invitation to our guests. While the past few years have warranted softer messaging and allowed us to shine a light on the people that make our destination exceptional, it's now time to show guests why they should be coming to Virginia Beach right now. From the unprecedented lineup of new events and offerings that's Virginia Beach, that sets Virginia Beach apart, and of course, our unbelievable coastline, there's never been a better time to experience our destination. Spring and summer is where we shine, and this year we're letting the destination speak for itself, and we're excited to extend that invitation. In the past, our message was, when you're ready to travel, we're ready for you. But now the message is, come to Virginia Beach right now. This is a sample of some of our digital advertising that can be seen out of market, and this slide shows some more examples of what our out-of-home offerings look like. And if this plays, this 30-second commercial will give you a brief overview to the. So the spring-summer campaign is a $3.9 million media spend, and this graph shows the mix of media, including social media, traditional advertising, digital marketing, and television. And the work never stops at CBB, and our marketing team is always looking downstream. While spring-summer campaign just launched, our team is already actively working on camp, future campaigns well into 2024. As you can see by this slide, the northeast corridor and the eastern seaboard continue to deliver for us from a tourism perspective, and we focus our ad spend on marketing that can provide the largest return on investment. Our campaign is strategically focused on families in two main categories. Samantha, who represents the 26 to 40 age range with young children and a household income of less than $150,000, and Alexandra, who represents the 35 to 55-year-old age range with slightly older children and a household income of more than $150,000. While the advertising messaging and offerings may shift slightly, it's important to note that the Samantha of today has the potential to be the Alexandria of tomorrow. While we want to talk to Sam and Alex, as they're affectionately known by our team, throughout their lifetime to make them long-life customers of Virginia Beach. As I explained early in this presentation, our marketing team is always on a time-travel journey, and by that I mean while it's March 2023 now, in our marketing team's mind, it's already October and time to focus on the fall-winter campaign. This is an exciting time for CBB, and with a fresh lens and approach, and with the support of our advertising advisory and stakeholder communities, we embarked on the search for our next advertising agency of record. Our deputy city manager, Taylor Adams, challenged us to find the best-in-class gold standard of destination marketing firms. After hearing pitch presentations from some of the greats, we selected the premier destination marketing firm, The Miles Partnership. Not to be confused with the local miles agency, who does great work in the public relations space, The Miles Partnership is a destination marketing specialist and represents brands like US Travel, Bermuda, Palm Beaches, Honolulu, the states of Louisiana, Kentucky, and much more. The team from Miles will be in market over the next several months, gathering photo and video assets, building content and creative, as well as meeting with members of our community to ensure a successful rollout of our campaign material for fall-winter and beyond. So I'll look forward to coming back to share that with you at an appropriate time, and with that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Okay, Rocky Rosemary.
Thank you very much. If you go back to slide three, uh, I saw you light up with a smile when you put slide three up there. And, uh, and that's some great events we've got, that's an all-star lineup. And so for, for the folks listening at home or plan on coming to these events, these are mostly located at the oceanfront, but I would like to invite you to District One to try one of our great restaurants or businesses there in District One before you go to this event. So, uh, if you'd like to get a good meal before you go to the oceanfront, come on out to District One and get you a good meal and some, and some good, uh, small business. Thank you.
What a remarkable pitch, man.
Well, thank you, actually. If I can just add to that, for, for many of our events, we're marketing them throughout the entire city, and we have a great example of that coming up with the Something in the Water Festival. We just partnered with the Virginia Beach Restaurant Association to host the Something's on the Menu Restaurant Week in Virginia Beach, highlighting all of the restaurants around our entire destination, which gives people a chance to get out and experience Virginia Beach.
Great, Rosemary, and then Michael.
This is wonderful. Just a couple of things. The Van Gogh exhibit, I had a family member in California who reached out to me and wanted to know, so you're not just hitting the East Coast. Some message is getting out to California.
That's amazing. That's great to hear.
I was really surprised. She said, wow, this is great. I need more information.
Yeah.
So that's, that's really cool. Secondly, I love an invitation. People want to be asked. You know, all of us that run for office, we're taught to ask the people to vote for us. People want to be asked, so to invite, I think, is just a really hospitable, lovely thing to do, and, and I think it's really, really awesome. And then one other thing that somebody mentioned to me, and I, I'm going to pass it on to you and you, you know, think about it, uh, they were in the Sports Center, and a lot of times things are televised there that, I know when I watch tennis on TV or whatever, it always says where you are, and that we've got a lot of wall space that we should maybe be painting Virginia Beach or have banners or something so that when those TV cameras are in there, it's more free advertising for us.
Thank you, that's a great idea.
I thought that would pass that along, but, uh, this is fantastic. Nancy, you all did a great job.
Thank you, yeah. Last year, we sort of changed our vernacular from calling the, the people that come to Virginia Beach on vacation, they used to be called visitors, and now we call them our guests. And so when you extend an invitation, you're extending them to be a guest and you're, we feel like we're welcoming them to our home, so thank you for, for noticing.
Great, anybody else at this point? Michael?
Thank you very much. I agree with everything Vice Mayor just shared, particularly about the invitation. Really, I've seen a number of campaigns, and this is a very good one. So I want to compliment you and express my appreciation. To build on what Mr. Holcomb said, um, and to thinking about Alexandra, who values high-end shopping.
Yes.
Um, I want to take a moment to talk about Lynn Haven Mall.
Great.
Which is, um, an economic engine for our city and is doing remarkably well compared to malls across the country. We, a source of pride in District Three, but really for Virginia Beach, and I really think for the region. I mean, I spent some time talking to the Mike Harris, General Manager of Lynn Haven Mall, as I know you have, so I know you're prepared for this conversation. And, you know, every mall in the region is, I don't want to impugn them, but they're not performing anywhere near to the level of Lynn Haven Mall, and they're maintaining quality shopping experiences, good stores, and a vibrant kind of gathering place. It's, it's a really wonderful place that people who, you know, talk about having something for everyone, and the mall doesn't want to be left out, not that you're doing it or intentionally doing it, but the mall doesn't want to be left out in surrounding businesses of the conversations about the portfolio of amenities for visitors. So I wonder if you could share, using the mall as an example, how we can incorporate that into the menu of experiences that, sorry, that people can have while we invite them here, and, um, and not just for the mall, but the, all the amenities we have across the city.
Yeah, so we, we know that shopping is one of the pillars. When, when people come to our, our destination, we're always looking for, um, not only weatherproof activities, things for people to do, maybe if they have a, a day that, that's not the perfect day to be outside. We're, to the Vice Mayor's point, Van Gogh's just going to be such a huge win for us this summer for a lot of reasons, and a great partnership with the Virginia Arts Festival. Um, so we promote it on our, our website, where we help, um, guests build out itineraries while they're in, in destination, um, from, from a sort of a multitude of pillars, from the shopping and the sort of economic experience to culture. Some people like to come in and go on culinary tours and, and breweries and dining and experience the, the flavor of Virginia Beach. So we do try to help, um, guests build itineraries that way, and we promote it all on our website through our visitor information center. We talk to guests before they get here, while they're here, and then when they get home, we remind them of what a great time they had and, and tell them to come back and see us. So we'll definitely expand on that.
Great.
Well, since they're mentioning all of this, Town Center.
Yes, absolutely.
Didn't have the self-guided tour for African-American historic sites. In fact, one of it was on Ebony.
Yes.
We made that a thrill, press hit. But the other thing I wanted to mention, I was sitting in at this advertising, how did you get bulls and barrels on the oceanfront?
Do you want to take that one?
I do want to take that one. You know, councilmember, sometimes you just get lucky. Um, that's, no, the, 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 the long and short of it, and, and I do want to back up and, yeah, and talk about the calendar just, just for a minute so I can, so that, so that we can speak directly to some, some of the questions that we're getting. Before I do that, though, I, I do want to commend Nancy and her team. When I, when I think about, uh, where we were in the middle of 2020, when we really didn't know if we were going to come back, uh, when, when, when tourism nationwide was totally destabilized, our resort, basically our, our stakeholders throughout the city were truly fighting for, uh, for survival. To have the, uh, uh, to be where we are today is really exciting. And so, um, to talk about the calendar, and, and I promise, councilmember, I'm going to come back and answer that question on, on the rodeo. But, uh, but '21 was a reaction to the pandemic. So we, we had record revenues in '21 that we had never seen before, and that, it was sort of the perfect storm of being a, a drive-to, a drive-to destination, uh, in, in a country where people were desperate to get out and move around. And so '21, we had more, we had more than we could, we could even, we could keep our hands around. In '22, international travel came back, and so where '22 was still a great year, we saw an equal reaction to, uh, to Americans traveling abroad and going to other markets. And so '23 for us, we believe is the first year where we're getting back to, to businesses we've known it. And, and that's important because we're seeing group travel come back, we're seeing meeting and conventions start to show a little bit of a pulse, our youth sports continues to be strong. And, uh, and if I look at where we are, we're really in a, coming into the season, we're actually in a really great place from a trade standpoint. So when we build out this calendar, what we think about, it's, it's kind of like, it's kind of like the four quarters of a football game. You know, in, in a football game, in your first two quarters, you just run the plays you're best at, and that, and that's what we do. And so, uh, and, and in the third and fourth quarter, when you come out and say, if it's a close game, we may just keep running those plays we're great at, but that's also the opportunity for us to do some things that are, uh, that are, uh, a little more disruptive, a little more experimental, a little more fun. Well, our first two, our first quarter, basically, our kickoff is the week before Memorial Day, historically speaking. Now, I can argue with, with events like Something in the Water that we've, and, uh, and some of the program that we, we run on the sports tourism standpoint through the month of May, that really we're kicking the ball off the last week of April now. Uh, but, but Bulls and Barrels Rodeo is an example of us trying to be creative outside of the traditional season. We were having a great year. We wanted to see if we could create an impact. We didn't, we had no idea if we could pull this off or not. Uh, we'd, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the team at I am, at IMG, I Am Going, uh, for, for bringing this to us, uh, and William Yount specifically. But yes, ma'am, this was simply an attempt for us to try something new to see if we could create an impact, and, uh, the response has just been overwhelming. It's been, it's, we've really seen our community embrace it, which we're excited about. Coming back to that same sort of analogy, though, where, uh, you know, we want to run those plays we're best at in the first two quarters of the game, what you see here is what we believe is a return to the programming that you would typically see during a season in Virginia Beach, where we're activating the sand frequently, where we're bringing guests down, and we're, um, and we're, and we're maximizing that opportunity to generate revenue for the city. Now, we're actually working on what is a broader program. So we're, uh, I'm, I'm grateful to, uh, to my colleague Ken Chandler's team and Michael Kirschman and, uh, and Park and Recreation, where we're working on, on a, on, on what would be a citywide event series right now that would engage parks, um, as, as well as, as beachgoers to, uh, to spread sort of, uh, I don't want to get ahead of our announcement, but what would be a citywide activation. Um, we're, uh, we're looking, we're talking to Virginia Wesleyan in the arts and culture space, understanding that, again, um, there's, there's, uh, there's a need for us when we're talking about Sam and Alex and other, and other personas to get into that space. In Town Center, you're right, we're, we're excited about the Sandler Center, the Zire, and, and as well as the Ziders, uh, um, season, and also one of, what's become one of our marquee events is, is Last Night on the Town that we run in our Town Center every year. Um, and so just to say, don't think that this is a comprehensive. And so just to say, don't think that this is a comprehensive list of everything that we are doing. We've heard you loud and clear, and recognize that it's, that we have an obligation to spread this programming throughout the city. And, and other great examples are the events that run at the, at the Aviation Museum, the events that run at the Princess Anne Athletic Complex. What's great is, this is, we are one of the only destinations in America that, that, that is a city of half a million people connected to a resort. And that gives us a breadth of offering that really none of our competitors can match. And it really speaks to the power of our destination, and Nancy's team is doing a great job of delivering on that program and maximizing those assets. So we'll keep you updated on everything that we're going to add to this list as we move through the year, as we activate the entire city.
Give Nancy her hand clap.
Yeah. I'd like to thank the team at CBB, they're, they're everything, so thank you. What a nice thing.
Okay, Worth.
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Adams, Ms. Hellman, thank you, and congratulations. You spoke about the $3.9 million in advertising. Can you just quickly highlight some of the things that you spend the money on? Is it periodicals? Is it paid media?
Yeah, so, hold on, let me see if I can, I'm putting, there we go. Yeah, so we are, we're very focused on data at CBB, and so we strategically spend this money where we know we're going to get the biggest return on investment. This is a business for us, no question about it. We want to spend where we know visitors are going to come see us. So we do spend in the digital space, because frankly, we can be nimble, and if we see something that's working really well, or we want to change our messaging really quickly, we can do that. But we're really spread out across, between digital, which is banner ads you see on, on any given website that you're on, to TV commercials, like you, you just saw, playing on some of your favorite shows. Social media, we're, we're talking to our guests all the time through social media, from paid social to boosted social, to just conversations about what's going on in the city, to traditional advertising, which is what you just spoke about, beautiful ads and publications that make sense. We also have, outside of our, this is just our leisure campaign, we also have campaigns surrounding all of our business unit programming, from meetings and conventions, where we advertise in spaces that make sense, to meeting planners, and people that are considering Virginia Beach for their next convention, to sports media, where, where we're attending sports conferences, and we want to double down on a, on a destination that we're going to, to make sure that we're reaching as many event planners as possible, to international marketing, where we're talking to some of our, our clients and friends in, in, in markets that are really important to us, that will return for us, from the UK, to Germany, to, to Spain, and agreeing with our Economic Development Department. And our Economic Vitality portfolio, over the past 18 months, has really come together to ensure that we are efficient, that we are utilizing all of the resources available to us across the portfolio, and, and Taylor, to his credit, has driven that home to us, and really emphasized the fact that tourism doesn't work without economic development, and economic development doesn't work without tourism in a destination like ours. And so to have a more formalized program in that space has really been amazing to watch unfold, and I hope that answers your question, but I'd be happy to expand if you want.
Just one more follow-up. It does answer my question. How about Canada? I used to remember a lot of Canadian license plates here, but I don't see them as much, or what's the status?
You're absolutely right. Actually, our Cana, our Canada program just launched this week as well, so we, we do a very large campaign to, to Canada, and we have most of our literature translated to French-Canadian. We have an entire marketing team that just focuses on the Canadian market, and it's a big driver for us, frankly, because they come and they stay a long time. You know, a seven-night stay in Virginia Beach is a, is a great stay for us, so that's still a really important market for us, and we spend a lot of time focusing on it.
Thank you. Rosemary.
I just want to mention real quickly, and we're glad you went back to the advertising dollars. I think it's important for the watching public to know, this money does not come out of their real estate, taxes, all the general fund, that this comes from tourism dollars and the, and the hotel taxes. I don't know if you want to speak anymore.
Yeah. So we are incredibly fortunate in Virginia Beach, and this is very unlike most destinations around the country, that we have a dedicated funding stream to help with our tourism advertising, and it's called the Tourism Advertising Program. And again, it's funded by the hospitality community and taxes that are generated by guests that come to Virginia Beach. So we take that money and reinvest it back into, to the market, to help grow, and then our tourism investment program, which also helps us build, fund, and sort of elevate our tourism offerings, which, again, sort of create that cycle of life for us, where we can invest in ourselves, bring the guests in, and reinvest in ourselves. So we're really fortunate. So thank you very much for helping us keep that, those two programs going.
That's a TAP program.
Yes.
And if it's okay, I'll conclude with just a thought. In terms of what you spend on marketing, you do a remarkable job. You consider that a lot of our competition spends a lot more, you know, than we do. So it is really money wisely used. But the other thing is, too, that is around the city, and pretty close to Centerville, is this, your, your active sports marketing. This past Saturday, it was at the Virginia, you know, wrestling, you know, challenge wrestling. There were a couple hundred kids, from nine to 19, a couple hundred, you know, young boys and girls wrestling in a major, major competition. And you walk in, you go to the right, there was a wrestling, you go to the left, and there were soccer games going on. And the Field House at Landstown was packed.
Yes.
And, you know, the thing is, what we're doing with the Sports Center, and, you know, our soccer fields and everything, I'll tell you what, you got it going. Thank you.
Yeah, just to expand on that, while the, the Princess Anne Quarter was completely programmed with sports tourism activity, so was the convention and Sports Center campus with the NCAA Division II Track and Field Championship on the Sports Center side, and a huge cheer and dance event in the, in the convention center. So it was just all kids all the time, having a, a great time here, so.
Oh, great. Great presentation. Thank you. Okay, at this point, any council discussions at all? Rosemary?
So last week, I briefly mentioned about the Virginia 250 Commission that's coming up for us to participate. Josh and I have a resolution to go on the agenda next week, and it's just to appoint Mark Reed to be our person to go to all those meetings and all that, which, unless it's somebody here who wants to do it. But also for the Historic Preservation Commission to sort of head up the forming and the membership and all of that for, for the 250th anniversary. So we also wanted to ask if anybody else would like to co-sponsor this resolution.
Yeah, I'm on my board.
Yeah, I'll sponsor. Great. So Amelia?
Yeah.
This is good. Rocky, Michael?
Me.
Bobby?
Yep.
Anybody else? Worth?
Okay.
And Josh, would you like to say anything about it?
Nope, you're done.
Okay, anybody else for council comments? Yeah, Rocky.
Mr. Mayor, let me just say, for, for those listening out there, and, and those here on this body, the Virginia Beach Clean Community Commission had a meeting this past week, and they're having the Great American Cleanup, and it's going to be on Saturday, March 25th, from 08:00 to noon, at Marshview Park, 1033 Virginia Avenue. And they are definitely looking for volunteers to come out for this Great American Cleanup. So if you have the time on your calendar, and you can come out and give them a few hours, I know they really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, Michael, and then Amelia.
Couple things, Mayor. Yesterday, we had the second meeting of the Virginia Beach Cannabis Advisory Task Force, and it was a very well-attended meeting, and I thank Councilmember Schulman for attending, to listen, and support the work of the committee. It's a really, council did a really good job of assembling this group of people, and there's lots of other people out there with interest, who are going to be really working with city staff, and others in the community and statewide, to advance the discussion about this. And, and I just wanted to express my appreciation to all of the members of that committee who take their work very seriously, and also the city staff, who works, is working very diligently to support their efforts and make sure they have all the resources they need, and to participate in the conversation about zoning, and about enforcement, and all those things. So it's a very exciting time, even though there's lots of things happening in Richmond around that, but I just wanted the council to know how seriously these people are, these folks, city staff and citizens are taking their work, and how, and how much I appreciate everyone's efforts. The other thing is that, as you know, I have the privilege to serve as the liaison to the Sister City Association of Virginia Beach, and they've requested an opportunity to brief council on their vision for the future, where they are now, a little bit about what the Sister City Association is, if you're not familiar. And I want to thank Mayor Dyer for, for sponsoring that with me, to get them in line for briefing, and I look forward to hearing from them soon.
Okay, Amelia?
I have a few things to mention. I'll start right with going, and we missed Jennifer, you were on vacation, but for the Minority Business Council, it was a very good meeting, and we had someone from the, her name was Grace, from the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel, explain all of that opportunities and career opportunities for there. They mentioned the two huge machines they have. One is to boring it, and another for going down in the tunnel. And they were named Mary and Catherine. Remember the hidden figures?
Yeah.
So they were so neat, they were acknowledging women in that form. And then another area I went to was the Vision 2040. We had a small meeting with some of their board members, for them sharing their vision of how they can help within the city, and that was led by Martha McLeese. We had a small meeting. Besides that, Advertising Association, I think I've mentioned a little already when we talked about the booze. I had another here. Oh, yeah. The World Cultural Fest, as you know, and some of you have seen it today, we're out on Wavy 10, as we talked about this is coming up, and how they're trying to build, you know, working together, more compromise, collaboration, and I'm going to pass out the World Culture. And the city of Virginia Beach is also hosting it, and several different global communities within our areas, that they're part, and what their mission is, is March 25th, so we hope that people come out and support them at their Virginia Beach Convention Center, and through the city, they were able to be able to host that there. Also, I went to one group, we have a new African-American venue on the oceanfront, on Atlantic Avenue. They're called 757 Event, Virginia Beach Oceanfront Premier Venue. And they can host between 250 to 500 at that, and it's owned by African-American coffee. And they're located at 2014, so it was a nice opening, and just good to see, especially with something in the water and others coming in, that's another venue that they could use. I think I've covered pretty well all that I had.
Okay. Yeah.
Josh? Okay, Mr. Mayor, two quick items. I wanted to throw a huge shout-out to the Princess Anne High School Women's Basketball Team, who over the weekend won the Class V State Championship. It's their 13th championship, and I think it's their ninth in 10 years, so go Cavs, and just wanted to give them a shout-out. The other thing I wanted to make sure to mention is the series of town halls on our voting system, those are upcoming, and information is available on, on our city's website. And I know there was a press release sent out yesterday, but those town halls start on March 25th, and run the last week of March, and into the first week of April, so, so just encouraging the public to be on the lookout for that information.
Thank you. Anyone else? Worth?
Real quickly, also, I'm a council liaison to the Flood Mitigation Fund and Referendum Oversight Committee. We met last week. That meets every month, and part of the, the bylaws on that is to report, I think, every two or three months to council, whether it be in this session right here, or maybe more officially with LJ. There's a lot going on there across the city, as you know. Each and everyone's district is affected here, so how do you all want this to be reported? Do you want me to get, and there's a Jacobs Engineering does a monthly, through the Department of Public Works, does a monthly report, and that will usually comes in our package or every other month or so. How do you all want to be this committee to have?
Yeah, I think to Councilmember Remick, the point that he's trying to make is that the, the board chair and the board has, has come to the conclusion that where we are with the project right now, reporting out monthly, is, is not enough time to get a sense of significant material to present to council, right? So they don't feel like the updates are pertinent for your, your time. So I think from, what I got from staff, is that they would like to move to a quarterly cadence, where they could brief council on this on a quarterly basis. Okay.
Yeah, let's go to a quarterly one. And finishing up, we've got a, hopefully a short agenda with a close, you know, reminder tomorrow is the state of the city, and, you know, hopefully, you know, there's going to be a number of folks there. But let me just say, it's celebrating our last 60 years, but looking forward to our next 60 years. And there's going to be considerable shout-outs to how we got here, and what we're looking forward to. And it's the concept of really bringing forward community unity and prosperity for everybody, and giving shout-outs to, you know, elected leaders, the city staff, and all the people that live in Virginia Beach that have made us a great city. You know, so that will be tomorrow. And Rocky, one final thing, that Wrestle On Tournament I mentioned is sponsored by the Marine Corps.
Who rock. Rock.
I had to get that shit.
That's nice. Number five.
The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the upper meeting laws allowed by Section 2.23711A Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes. Personal matters, discussion considerations of interviews of prospective candidates for employment assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of a public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A1. Council appointees, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Okay.
Councilor Blodgy?
Aye.
Councilor Higley?
Aye.
Councilor Wood.
Aye.
Councilor Ross Hamon?
Aye.
Councilor Ralph?
Aye.
Councilor Schulman?
Aye.
Councilor Taylor?
Aye.
Councilor Wood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Aye.
We're ready? Okay, I call this back in order and answer a motion to certify the closed session.
So moved. Second.
All right.
Councilor Belushi?
Aye.
When you write me that, I have trouble reading.
Aye.
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 You don't want to leave it.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all, great session, we'll be returning.